I bow to order the meeting of the Goochlin Board of Supervisors for February 5th, for our afternoon session. As we always do, we will start our meeting with an invocation. The Reverend Nate Varney from Oakland Baptist Church is going to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Supervisor Susan Lasclere.
Thank you all for having me and allowing me to open you up in prayer. Let us go now to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for this beautiful sunshine. We thank you for this time to gather and fellowship and discuss the business of the county and the community. In this day and time, it's very difficult to be a leader of anything. We just pray that your guidance and your strength and your leadership abilities through these people will shine through and guide this county and this community into the future. Just give them your peace and your comfort during this time in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
(Applause). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda this evening is our citizen comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on any topic important to Goochlin County, please step forward and give us your name and address and try to limit your comments to about three minutes.
Thank you, sir. My name is Richard Francis Willis. I live at 2741 Kirkland Road.
Mr. Willis?
Oh, Mr. Willis, would you step to the microphone right here in the center?
That's necessary.
Well...
There's folks following along at home and they can only hear through that microphone, so they would not be able to hear you otherwise.
Okay. Just for a little background information, I've lived in Goochlin County for 50 years. I grew up just across the line in Louisa. My family has been in the state of Virginia since, according to our genealogy, since the early 1600s. I can trace my ancestry back easily to 1820. And before that, with a little effort, I could chase it back to 1700s. So, you know, I'm not a new kid here and I'm not just here to complain, just looking at something to complain about. I'm here to talk about noise. Now, to those who have not been affected by noise, it's not a big deal, but if you have someone who is a careless, irresponsible neighbor and they have dogs or pets or creatures that create noises continually for long periods of time continuously, then after a while begins to really, really grate on your nerves. I'm one of those such people. In 2012, some Latin Americans moved in to my neighborhood across the field from where I live. You'll notice I'm pretty nervous. I don't like doing this, but I wouldn't be here but for the fact that these issues are important, not only to me but to the county as a whole. These Latin Americans had fighting roosters. They chain them up close to each other. They fight, or they don't, they fight when they're, when they're supposed to, but when they're off duty, they stand and crow at each other for hours on end, from daybreak until dark and after dark. I complained to the county administrator at the time. There was no noise ordinance. Nothing was done. In 2015, a neighbor down the street just a ways got a pit bull and they kept it in the house during the daytime. They turned it loose at night on a chain and it barked continuously from, say, like 5:00 in the afternoon to dark and after. In 2017 and 2018, another, one of my aunt's places was sold, some people moved in, and in the spring of 2017, they started up racing ATVs. These are not the sneaky things hunters used to run through the woods with. These are the ones that make a lot of cotton pecking noise. And, you know, continual noise over a long period of time really gets on your nerves. In 2018, summer and spring, they were back at it again. I expect them to be back this spring. I'm sure this has happened to a heck of a lot of other citizens and this is not responsible, acceptable behavior. Other counties, and to name a few, Powhatan, Louisa, Flu venom, even Cumberland have noise control standards. Air County has no noise standard. This really is not good. And there's no reason that we can't have a standard. These other counties, of the 100 counties in the state of Virginia, probably at least, I would venture a guess, probably at least 50 of them have noise ordinances. All we have to do is contact those people. I'm sure it's not copyrighted, cut and splice from their noise ordinance. You guys approve it, as I understand, and adopt it into ordinances. I think the Code of Virginia gives you that authority. Not only have I had to contend with that noise, obstructive noise in my life, I'm somewhat of a unique character in that I worked for OSHA for 30 years. The last 20 I spent monitoring noise is one of my obligations, responsibilities. So I know a little bit about it. County officials say dogs are a main cause of noise. Dogs are a cause of noise. I've experienced that myself. And I'm talking about occasional dogs barking in a pen, a deer hand, a bunch of deer hands barking in a pen. I'm talking about dogs that bark constantly, on, 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 and on, steady, yep, 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 yep. And these people that had those dogs, they were insensitive, irresponsible people. There should be some responsibility that the county can, some issue that the county can take with it and monitor and cause control in that issue. You can take care of dogs, constant scolding dogs, even mechanical methods will cause those dogs to shut up. I grew up on a farm. We hunted deer with hands. We had six, eight hands in our pen. We hunted quail with quail dogs. They didn't bark. They didn't bark. They didn't disturb the neighbors. They didn't disturb us. We just trained them not to. It's that simple. Given the fact that there's a strong dog lobby in the county, I guess that, you know, dissuades county from developing ordinances, but if those other counties can have ordinances, there's absolutely no reason we can't have ordinances. All you have to do is cut and splice out of some of those other 50 counties that must have ordinances, and I'm sure we can put together something that's enforceable. There are a heck of a lot of county voters who are negatively impacted by dogs barking. And quite honestly, there's probably a heck of a lot more county people who are negatively impacted than there are people that own dogs, those county residents or voters.
Mr. Willis, if you could kind of wrap up, wrap up your...
I'm wrapping it up now.
Okay.
That's all I have to say. All I'm asking is that the county come up with an acceptable ordinance comparable to adjacent counties and use a good standard, and there are standards that can be written that have quantitative values that you can monitor. And you can say, well, you exceeded this limit and therefore you subject to ordinance, blah, blah, whatever it is, and you subject to be cited. It's not fair to the county. It's not fair to our county officials who have to be given the task of trying to tamp down noise when they don't have an ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Willis, and we'll discuss it and get back to you.
I'm sorry, those are a little nervous enough. This is not my...
We understand.
I've had occupational therapy out in the sky. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to first, my name is Pamela Johnson. I'm the Treasurer of Goochlin County. My home address is 4151 Drew Ridge Drive, Louisa, Virginia, 23093. That is in Haydensville. And my work address is 1800 Sandy Hook Road, Goochlin, Virginia, 23063. I want to share a letter that you all should all have a copy in front of you. I'd like to read that into the record and then make a few remarks. This letter is written to the Honorable Manuel Alvarez Jr., Chairman of the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors, and to the Honorable Timothy K. Sanner, Chief Judge of the 16th Judicial Circuit. Gentlemen, this letter is to notify you of my intention to retire from the Office of Treasurer of Goochlin County effective July 1, 2019. I ask that the court take the necessary steps to set the date of the special election pursuant to Code of Virginia Sections 24.2-228.1 and 24.2-682. In addition, I hereby designate Chief Deputy Treasurer Pamela E. Duncan as the highest ranking deputy to assume office as interim treasurer pursuant to Code of Virginia Section 24.2-228.1B until a special election or general election is held and the person elected has qualified and has taken the oath of office. Serving as Treasurer of Goochlin County has been a great honor, as well as one of the most personally rewarding positions I have ever held over the course of my employment life. Thank you for your support that you have given to me personally and to the Treasurer's office. In addition, I will say, and you can see on the back that I've made information copies to all of you, all the judges of the 16th Circuit, to the county administrator, Mr. Bodesky, to the county attorney, Mrs. McGee, and then there are two copies that will be mailed, one to Robin Di Socio, the Executive Secretary of the Compensation Board, to notify them of this change, and Martha Mavridy, the Auditor of Public Accounts, who will have to arrange for the turnover audit. One of the reasons I did this and did not finish out my term was because it's easier to do an audit at the end of the fiscal year. I'm going to give, and also because I don't want to continue to take a paycheck that I don't feel I'm really completely earning like I was before. So here are my remarks. Almost eight years ago, I stood in this very spot and advised the members of then Goochlin County's Board of Supervisors that we had only way to go, one way to go, and that was up. Our primary goal was to repair and restore the broken trust in the Goochlin Treasurer's office. This we have done. We did this by balancing the books, correcting the accounting system, establishing protocols, policies, separation of duties, and internal controls, all non-existent at the time that I took office. We insisted on the education and certification of all staff members and we did all that was necessary to achieve office accreditation. Of around 130 Treasurer's offices in the Commonwealth of Virginia, annually only between 50 and 60 offices are accredited, and Goochlin is one of them. We have been accredited for the past five years and I've completed our application for this year. We have increased our collection percentages for real estate to 99.37% and for personal property to 98.96%. This is due not only to the hard work of the Treasurer's staff, but also to the fact that the overwhelming majority of people in Goochlin County are good, responsible citizens. We are fortunate to live here in relative harmony with one another. We have had spotless audits each year. We have worked to modernize the office and to increase efficiency. Lines out to the parking lot no longer exist in Goochlin County. While I had a leadership role in all of this, none of this was achieved alone. I have had the Treasurer's staff to be, I've asked the Treasurer's staff to be here today so that they can be recognized for doing the work or the heavy lifting that was necessary to make the Goochlin County Treasurer's Office one of the bests in the Commonwealth. So I'd ask those ladies to please stand, and I'm going to read their names in the order of seniority. Leola Payne, Tanya Prophet, Pamela Duncan, Janet Fontenot, Tracy Bowman, and Cricket East. These are the ones who have done all the hard work. They have done everything that animal, that I've asked them to do. And they have always, even at times when we've had people who are out for emergencies, just as I have been over the last year, they have stepped up and made the difference so that we didn't miss a beat. As I move closer to retirement, my hope is that the office will not miss a beat at that time and the transitioning to new leadership. I've been planning this for about two years. Some of you know that. And so it just happened that I got hurt and I was, we were doing the right thing in moving toward this time. So I thank you all and the citizens of Goochlin County for the tremendous support and encouragement that you have given to us and especially to me personally over the last few years. I ask that God bless each and every one of you and God bless the citizens of Goochlin County. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.[958.00][958.00](Applause). As she rolls away fast.[967.56][967.56](Laughter). I would like to thank you. It's not often that we get to know people that worked as hard as you did and your team did. Your leadership was amazing. I remember our first year on this board, that you'd come and give us your report every month and the struggles that you guys were going through to straighten things out and to find things in the drawers and so on. I really appreciate what you've done. You have earned the trust of the citizens. I think most people today don't remember what happened here before, and it's evidence of the work that you and your staff have done and your leadership in the department. And I'd like to ask my peers if they'd like to say anything as well. I would almost, I wish I could not accept, I could reject your resignation, but I know I don't have that kind of power. So I just wish you well. Anybody else want to make a comment?
I will, Mr. Chairman. I just think of how far we've come from where we were eight years ago and just like to thank you, Pam, and your entire staff, because I have full confidence that it's being done right and we don't have to worry about it, even though you give us all the reports and all that, which is great, that's what we need, but I just have full confidence that it's being done right. And even when I come in on the last day, when taxes are due, and come and make my payment, I'm not standing in a line.[1066.23][1066.23](Laughter) Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, I just want to thank you for all your hard efforts. It's been phenomenal. The turnaround from where we were to where we are is just immeasurable. You have earned and well-deserved, enjoyable retirement. So whatever you pursue going forward, we wish you all the best and God bless and leave your forwarding information in case we need to reach out.[1090.15][1090.15](Laughter) Thank you.
Pam, I think, you know, probably everybody from in my district really appreciates what you've done over the past eight years and some change. I don't, it's always hard to kind of say goodbye to somebody you've been working with closely and have seen such phenomenal changes in an organization and in a community and your staff is, you know, second to none in this state, probably, you know, once again punching well above their weight, and I think that's a tribute to your leadership and actually in the fortitude of the folks inside your office. Thanks. Really want to extend a round of appreciation for your work as well. But we know this won't be the last time we'll see you and look forward to what's going to transpire down the road. Thanks again for all your support.
And Ms. Johnson, I would echo those comments and thank you. As most folks, most folks know, I was on the school board until close to a year now, but you also, nobody's here to thank you from the school board, but I know in my six and a half years on the school board, we appreciated your support. I mean, I would echo the same things. You and your office did wonders for the county and it's not just for the Board of Supervisors, but I think all the departments, the other constitutional officers are most indebted to you and I know I appreciate all you've done and I wish you the best.
One last thought. Today, we had a Finance and Audit Committee meeting and one of the figures we heard was that 99 point...
37.
37% of citizens of Goochlin pay their taxes on time and it's...
But not on time.
Not on time, but...
But they pay their tax.
They pay their taxes, which is the highest, probably the highest percentage in the state. But, and I think it goes to the fact that it's pleasant now to come into your office and pay. I remember years ago, before we were elected, that one citizen brought his taxes in pennies and dropped it on the counter and it was just discussed with the office, it's discussed with the taxes. We ran as a team and I am so honored that I had the opportunity to run with you and to see this county turn around. And the fun part has been, the success we've had has been because of all the players. And I see another school board member here today who ran together with me and Karen, a new school board member, and of course John was a school board member, and it was the kind of the complete team effort that got us to where we are today. And I really appreciate your help. You won't be the only one to be gone shortly, but...
I'm not going to die.
No, you're the first. You're the first. So...
I'm a memorial.
We'll record, we've recorded it, so we'll keep it for that. Anyway, thank you again. Appreciate it. Anyone else with public comments? It's going to be hard to follow that, but the floor is still open. Mr. Lyle.
Another member of the team that ran together with us. Yeah? Yep.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I commented on my way up. I certainly know how to clear a room, but my name is Jonathan Lyle. I live at 1521 Manneken Road. And, you know, I look over my left shoulder and back in that corner where Chief McKay would invariably be sitting, he's not there. And I just wanted to take a couple moments and express my appreciation as a citizen for Chief McKay and all that he did over his eight years here in the county. He is just somebody that's just fun to be around. And I asked him last time I saw him as to who is now going to be the Relay for Life champion, because he invariably walked, I think, 23 out of the 24 hours. I also want to share my appreciation specifically for Ms. Hunter and Mr. Kilduff, who took time on their day off, it was a county holiday, and they met with citizens regarding issues that involve zoning and county planning. And that is just a high testimony, I think, to their appreciation for what a neat place Goochlin is and their specific willingness to step up and help people be engaged and knowledgeably engaged. I have come to enough of these meetings that I've seen people who are engaged, but perhaps not informedly engaged. I don't know if that's a word, but I just, I'll use it that way anyway. And to that point, I also want to make specific mention to Mr. Bodesky. I see Mr. Bodesky most typically in the evenings. I'm taking it on faith that he does work during the day as well.[1427.83][1427.83](Laughter). But, Mr. Bodesky, I really appreciate that you, and thank goodness you're not an hourly employee, because I don't know that we could afford you if you were. I was a big fan of your predecessor, and we're all unique individuals, but I have really come to appreciate your unique approach to this. I must apologize, I don't know you perhaps as well as I did your predecessor. I don't know if you like root of Vegas. I don't know if you like coconut cake, but these are things I might get to know as time goes on. But I do want to think that you are leading by example, because I see staff out there stepping up and trying to do the right thing. That does not mean I always agree with them, but I have never doubted the sincerity of their efforts. And so, thank you, Mr. Bodesky, Ms. Hunter, Mr. Kilduff, Mr. Stamy too, he just wasn't there on his day off, but I'm sure he was somewhere else. And really, Ms. McGee, how could I leave you out? That would be an oversight. Never leave out an attorney. So, from that, and my ADD kicked in, I just want to say thank you. And Chief McKay, and the final point is, Ms. Johnson, I don't know, I'm not going to have her coattails to pull me across the finish line if I stand for election again, so I don't know what I'm going to do. I might have to rethink my future. But, Mr. Bodesky, thank you. And light hadn't gone off, but I'm going to sit down anyway.
Yeah, Mr. Lyle, since you gave so many positive comments, we'll give you an extra minute at the 7:00 meeting.
Linda Moore, 2164 Prophet Road, Manneken Sabbath. I want to thank every one of y'all, including Joanne and Susan, for coming out to, on your holiday to help my neighbors understand a little more about rezoning. They came away with a lot of useful information. Joanne did a wonderful job on her PowerPoint presentation and she sent it to me and I sent it on to more people and more people, and so it's getting out there as fast as it can. So hopefully, you know, it's helping us to understand a little more about everything. As Jonathan said, it was refreshing that everybody was, got along really, really well at this meeting. There was no fighting.[1613.04][1613.04](Laughter). It was, well, even at churches, we have had some times. So, but having, having the county administrators there, really, my church members said on Sunday morning, they couldn't believe that I had an administrator, you know, and supervisor at our church to explain to us the procedure, and they were that interested in us. They did, they never thought it would happen. So I am so grateful because you made me look like a superstar. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Anyone else?
I think I have to stop now.
Okay, I will close the citizen comment period. Next item is chairman's comments, and I think I've exhausted all of mine, other than I'd like to thank Joanne for all the folks that have thanked Joanne. She's, she really is terrific and obviously Ms. Johnson for the work she's done over the last few years. Mr. Bodesky, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few comments today. One, Ms. Johnson and her staff left, but they have been a great asset to me as I've transitioned. It's almost two and a half over that years that I've had the pleasure to serve Goochlin, and her leadership and staff are second to none. And really, you know, she has had some medical issues over the past year and her staff didn't miss a beat, and I think that's a prime example of good leadership before that kind of thing happens. And so look forward to working with her staff in transition and whoever comes out of an election, but certainly it's been a pleasure to work with them. Mr. Lyle had mentioned Chief McKay, and so with Chief McKay's vacancy, we, I did want to make sure that everyone, where it was clear that our chief, Eddie Ferguson, will be serving as interim chief for us. Eddie, thank you for stepping up into that role and providing consistent leadership for our troops and our fine department. We will be posting that position in the near term, but we have very capable hands to assist in the transition and will look to fill that vacancy in the long run in the months to come. I think many of our residents are aware, but I did want to remind everybody that on February 19th, I will introduce the recommended county administrator's budget for fiscal year 2020. Our fiscal year here runs from June 1 to July 30, or, excuse me, July 1 to June 30th, and that my recommendation will encompass the countywide, including recommended... And that my recommendation will encompass the countywide, including recommended schools budget, public safety. Across the gamut, we include utilities in those budgets, all county departments and constitutional offices. And everyone may be aware, we're required to introduce a balanced budget. That is just the beginning of a multi-month process. Even though we've been working on it since sometime in October, we will introduce it to the board on the 19th. There are a number of presentations on the 19th, including public safety presentations and human resources. And beyond that, we have additional meetings scheduled. And all these are on our website and have been posted, but February 26th, we have additional meetings. March 5th, additional meetings, and March 12th, additional meetings. They're all in this room at three o'clock start. They will all be recorded, just as we do with board meetings. So, these are all public sessions and will be streamed and recorded. There's a lot of information that we go through in these sessions. This is just part of the overall budget process. In addition to this, as you know, when you come to a public hearing in this room, tend to have some structured limits on time. There are many other opportunities for folks to engage in, with the county in this budget process. We will have three additional town halls in March. On March 13th, the districts two and three town halls will be held. On March 18th, the District One Town Hall will be held. And on March 27th, the districts four and five town halls will be held. Again, all these are on our website, we also post in the paper. On April 2nd, we will actually have the formal county public hearing on the budget process and any thoughts and perspectives that individuals have prior to the planned adoption on April 16th. And so, also, keep in mind, feel free to call, feel free to reach out to your board members. This is an opportunity for us, it's not a one-way conversation. We're here to develop the set of priorities through the budget that will fund next year. And we will also be recommending and adopting a five-year capital improvement plan that's balanced. But we now do a 25-year capital improvement plan here for Goochland County. And so, there's a lot of different steps in this process. All along the way, you will hear from the subject matter experts, whether it be department heads, school staff, constitutional officers, and some of their perspectives on the recommended budget. And the board will obviously bring all of their perspectives and thoughts on behalf of the residents to that process. So, again, February 19th is the kickoff, but we welcome and encourage as much feedback as you'd like to participate in the county budget process. Mr. Chairman, that's all I had today.
Thank you, Mr. Bodeski. The next item is request to postpone agenda items. Any requests? Or, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll move on. The next item then is the minutes. We share those minutes with the packet, any questions or updates to the minutes? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, minutes are approved. So, we move on to reports, and the first report as usual is VDOT, Mr. Wynn.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hope you all had a good month this past month. We've been through a couple more snow events, as you probably know. Not near as bad as the first snow event we had in December, but we made it through it okay. Have you had a chance to look at the maintenance agenda?
Yes.
Had any questions about that? If not, I'll go through some other information. We did, we had 30 work requests, and we completed 32 of the requests. And that sounds kind of odd, but we have requests that go back a little ways, so we try to catch them up as fast as we can. Had three call-outs between Sandy Hook and Oilville. And speaking of Sandy Hook, I wanted to introduce you, introduce you to the new superintendent, Sandy Hook. It's Bruce Puffenbarger. He's the new superintendent, right down the road from you, Mr. Alvarez. So, he's been working for me for a while. He was a maintenance manager at the residency and decided to step down to be a superintendent, to be closer to home. Because he was driving from Sandy Hook to Ashland every day, and then working down in Chol City and New Kent. So, he's gonna be a good asset in the county of Goochland, I can tell you that. Some of the engineering things that have been going on, we did complete a study on Route 6. Mr. Agnew? The Route 6 study is completed, it was decided to keep the 55 through that area from between 288 and Henrico County. I think they decided with the two lights, it would slow traffic down or whatever. But that's what the study, what it came out in the study. We've got some pending studies right now, the park and ride at Oilville Road. We're looking at some enhanced pavement marking there, so people can see it. I think we had a departure, somebody tried to turn in there and ran off the entrance. So, we're gonna put some more delineators and probably some pavement marking there. The traffic engineer is looking at what they deem will be necessary for that area. Route 6 in the Crozier area, we're looking at a school bus stop head sign in that area. Route 6 eastbound, right at River Road, we're looking at some warning signs for that intersection. And we did have, we had a discussion about the rock quarry earlier at Basque Bell, Basque Bell Rock Quarry, whether it industrial access is. One of the managers was at our meeting prior to this meeting, discussing signage that they could probably procure and install within the VDOT right away. And they're supposed to be, I think Todd Kilduff and Tom will go work with him on a concept, what can be put out there and get it back to me. That way, I can get traffic engineering to review it, just to enhance the safety with the big trucks coming out of the industrial access, where the quarry is. They're not so concerned about the store itself, or where the quarry traffic comes out. The roundabout 250-522, there was just a meeting last week with Mr. Barlow. He's from Louisa. That's on track for June of 2021 advertisement. Northbound River Road, Patterson Avenue, the turn lanes that Danny's working on, that's on track. 522 Fairgrounds Road, roundabout, that's on track as well for 2022 advertisement. And 250-288 intersections with the lighting and everything, that's on track for January of 2020. So, other than that, do you have any questions? I know, Mr. Alvarez, you sent some information in about rumble strips and plowable markers through the 522 corridor, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right?
Yes, yes.
We're looking at, the rumble strips, they're a little, they're a little tough to get, because they're mostly for roadway departures, so, and they're noisy. That's, that's the big issue about rumble strips. But traffic engineering is gonna look at that whole corridor of 522 for the plowable markers with the reflectors in them. That's more applicable for that area. If you look at the traffic engineering site, that, those plowable markers are only, you know, warranted for 15,000 vehicles a day or more. Well, 522 only has 7,200 vehicles, but they go look at that and hopefully push it through. So, that's something that Danny and I will work through traffic engineering on to hopefully make that happen.
I think the gentleman who complained, or who called me about this, was concerned that coming down on 522, it was hard to see the lines, especially when the headlights hit you, it's hard to see the middle of the road. And he lives right off 522, across from the Preston Park. And that area is kind of, it is kind of dark, it's around the curve. But he's also called me unhappy when the road got repaved and it was noisy. So, I think the rumble strips would probably increase the amount of noise.
It would increase it tenfold, I can tell you that.
But his concern was, why did, why don't we do it in Goochland? And we have the lights, the center reflectors, once you cross 250 into Louisa, and then the rumble strips all the way from Goochland across the bridge to Powhatan and.
You probably, if you look at the traffic count, you'll probably see twice as many vehicles a day than through the section of Goochland. I don't know that traffic count, but I can look it up. I can find out. I can give, with the residency administrator in Louisa, and Chesterfield, to find out what the traffic counts are on those two legs that you're talking about.
Yeah, it'd be great to have those, have those numbers.
Okay.
From the bridge down to Route 60 and then north of 250.
Right, right.
It'd be great. Any, any questions for Mr. Wynn? I have one more question. On all the projects.
You only get one.
On all these projects, it says, it'll be advertised in 2020, 2021. What happens between now and then? Is the engineering going on?
Engineering plans, utilities, you name it, all of that.
So, when it's advertised, it's pretty much ready to go, we're just waiting for somebody to bid on the project.
Exactly. That's when it'll go at the bid for the contracts, they'll probably have a pre-bid, a mandatory pre-bid, where contractors come in and look at everything. And if you, if a contractor doesn't come in for the mandatory pre-bid, he can't bid on it. So, that's how it works.
That's a question I always get, because people read the minutes and they see, why is it gonna take so long? It's been funded, and.
There's a lot of things going on, on the program part of it, like utility relocation, I mean, the.
Right away.
Right away, any number of things can be going on. Right away takes a long time, and utility relocation takes a long time too. And those are the two most expensive things anyway, right away and utility. Okay?
Thank you. You have a question? Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
Thank you.
Next report is fire and rescue. Chief Ferguson?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Eddie Ferguson, serving as your interim fire chief. I know you received a report from our department in your board packet. If I may, I have some, some highlights, as well as some additional updates for you here today. Like everyone else, I also would like to thank Chief McKay for all of his service to our organization in the county of Goochland. Eight and a half years and 39 years plus for public safety experience across the Commonwealth, including the city of Niagara Falls. Chief McKay did an awesome job, and we appreciate his leadership. Having said that, I'd also like to thank everyone who attended Chief McKay's reception last Wednesday afternoon. And special thanks to Ms. Baskewich and Mr. Bodeski for all they did to make that such a nice occasion and enjoyable afternoon. So, 2018 finished up for fire rescue, one of the busiest years ever on record. We broke actually 3,000 emergency incidents. That's 11.4% increase from 2017. And this is the first time that we've crested above 3,000 calls, both fire and rescue. I'd also like to recognize everyone in our department for operating efficiently and safely during the two winter weather events we had in December and then in January. Both our volunteers and our career staff participated and up-staffed in our stations to minimize response time and travel time to emergency, considering the road conditions and so forth. We got some good news. On January 1st, we received a Rescue Squad Assistance Fund grant. We refer to that as an RSAF grant for another new ambulance. It was $137,000 awarded. It also included some money for a resupply of nasal naloxone, the opioid reversal agent that both we and our enforcement partners are all equipped with. The RSAF grant, just in case you're interested, is funded by the money that we pay on our vehicle registrations. We refer to it as For For Life money, that goes to the Virginia Office of EMS. But it's actually $6 and a quarter, and some of that goes to the state's general fund. But it funds the RSAF grant money program, and we applied, and we were successful in getting that grant. Some of you may have noticed out front, I know the board members, we thank you for taking the time to look at the first new ambulance that, that we have received. The vehicle is going to Company 6, it's a brand-new F-550 Horton emergency vehicle ambulance. It's our first four-wheel-drive ambulance, it has some enhanced safety features built into it. It has a power load system that allows the stretcher to be loaded. It also secures the stretcher tightly in place, but it also can go a long ways to preventing a back injury to one of our emergency responders lifting the weight. Even though we have power stretchers, power stretchers are heavier than the traditional stretchers that we operate it. It has enhanced harnesses on it, a heating and cooling system, and other safety features to include supplemental restraint airbags in the patient care compartment. So, I want to thank you for your support to buy a quality vehicle and also a safe vehicle. We responded to a structure fire on January the 23rd on Rockville Road. There was an approximately a 70-by-100-foot building that was destroyed by fire in the building. There were about 11 cars, mechanic tools, and some other storage items. The fire started from some mechanic work that was being done on the vehicle. And unfortunately, a citizen received burns and had to be transported to an area hospital. We had approximately 25-plus firefighters from Goochland involved in it, plus our mutual aid jurisdictions came out and helped us. And we had some other calls that occurred at the same time in the county, accidents and so forth. We're continuing our career firefighter EMT hiring process. I'm happy to tell you that we have nine candidates that are going for interviews on February the 12th. We have three positions that are available for immediate hire. These three positions will go a long ways to shore up our existing coverage and the fire stations that we're staffing on a regular basis, along with our volunteer partners. So, we're hoping to make some progress on that. I would like to take just a minute, in case anyone is interested in our new numbering system. I've had lots of people in the public who've approached us, who have scanners, who follow us, follow our radio traffic, which we appreciate. We engaged in a new numbering system as a regional initiative. And the idea was, is that if all of the regional mutual aid partners had a unique unit identifier, and we're working on the scenes together, we don't get confused. You know, Goochland may have an Engine 1, and Henrico has an Engine 1, and Hanover has an Engine 1. So, long story short, the unit identifier that we reserve for Goochland is the sixth identifier. So, we have renumbered our units. For example, Engine 1 is Engine 601 for Company 1, and 602 for Company 2, and so forth and so on. And that's why we did that. It's a system that is already in place in Northern Virginia and also in the tidewater area that works very well. And quite honestly, most all of our mutual aid partners around us are either going to it or already have gone to it. It's a little challenging for us at the present time, remembering our own unit numbers, plus the unit number that we're trying to call. But if you have a scanner and you're listening, that's the logic behind it. It's gonna help us when we're working mutual aid with our partners. And last but certainly not least, I just would like to take a moment and thank you for the opportunity to serve as the interim fire rescue chief. It's a true honor and pleasure to serve the department and the county in this capacity. I'm happy to assist you and any other citizens, or any of the members of our organization in any way. And please don't hesitate to contact me. It's our vision that we'll continue the forward advancement and progress of the fire rescue department that Chief McKay so eloquently laid out. And unless you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, that's Fire Rescue's report, so.
Any questions for Chief Ferguson?
Don't ask me a unit number question, I might have to.
Chief, I just, Mr. Chairman, thank you for stepping forward. I really do appreciate your stepping up, and I have no doubt that you do a phenomenal job, as long as you're in that position. And my question is really one of, the mutual aid, where we give aid and we receive aid. And if I eyeballed the numbers and statistics. You already know where I'm going with this.
I do.
What do you think about that?
Well, we, we, over the years, Goochland has historically provided more mutual aid than we've received. For, for 30, almost 40 years, 30-plus years, you know, we had an automatic mutual aid agreement with Hanover County, and we provided ambulance service in the Rockville area. In addition to that, in recent years, our numbers have started to go up. We give mutual aid to Louisa County quite a bit. And I'll tell you that that's primarily on Interstate 64. And from the standpoint of the dangers that we are exposed to working on the highways, and you guys have seen that on the news, where fire engines and so forth are getting hit by cars on the highway around the Richmond area and across the state. Basically, they're calling us out there a lot to be able to, to help them safely manage that incident and protect those people that are working in that incident space. We'll help any jurisdiction around us if they, if they, you know, call us. And certainly, we want to make sure that we have our bases covered here at home before we send those units out. But of course, also, we're greatly appreciative of the assistance that we receive. But of course, also, we're greatly appreciative of the assistance that we receive. Henrico County provides assistance. Hanover County provided assistance on the structure fire I just mentioned on Rockville Road. Powhatan came over and Louisa came over that day, and they filled our stations. In case we got other calls, we could answer those calls as well. So we monitor our mutual aid numbers. You know, they're actually down quite a bit from what they used to be when we ran 125, 150 ambulance calls in Hanover. We very rarely run in ambulance calls in the Rockville area of Hanover. But, you know, that's only because they put a service in that Rockville station, and that's a mutual aid resource for us to call over here.
Okay. Chief, do we, as we envision going forward, either renovating, relocating, adding capacity in different areas? Do we coordinate with our neighbors so that we don't both put a station in one place?
On the county line? We look we look at that and, you know, you can, there are jurisdictions across the Richmond area that have that have had or have fire stations almost within sight of each other or very close in proximity.
Right.
And we certainly would not want to do that. And it just so happens that all of our station locations that we're looking at are not affected by that equation.
Okay.
You know, we don't have those other agencies that close to it. But the Louisa example, you know, in many cases, we might be a little bit closer to Interstate 64 than they do. And when you have an emergency out there and you're trying to figure out a county line, we just send the help to make sure that the patients and the citizens get the help.
Absolutely. Yeah, when there's life's in danger, you don't stop and think about those things, you just go. So I appreciate that.
That's exactly right.
And we hope they do the same for us.
And they do. I can assure you they will, and they do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Quick question. That, Mr. Peterson's question prompted, we've looked at this mutual aid imbalance or balance before, I remember, and I'm not looking at the numbers now.
Yes, sir.
But his, your answer to his question, like when we're providing mutual aid and Powhatan or Louisa come over and cover, does their just coming to cover, or in our case, maybe us in reverse going over to just cover and not take a call? Does that count in the equation?
It accounts if we initiate an incident number and it ends up in our database. And usually, we do. Usually, we do. For example, many times, you know, we may go into Hanover and fill a fire station. They may be on a fire, they may have other units over the woods of Ashland, and we would go and fill the Rockville station or the Farrington station. We would create an incident number for that, and that would count, count in that as well. So yes, sir.
Would Hanover, in that case, would Hanover have to do something on their end for them to recognize that as an aid or?
Our fire reporting system, there are questions built into our fire reporting system that causes the the report writer to check those boxes and identify whether you're receiving or giving mutual aid, or in some cases, you would just check none. And then it goes down and you would capture whether, you know, which jurisdiction that you're that you're working with.
Gotcha.
But there's, it's reciprocated, and we work well together. And, you know, having, if we're busy on a fire and having Louisa or Hanover or Powhatan come in and cover a fire station so that we can answer another call. And that's the thing, you know, we're getting busier, and it's rare that we just have one incident at a time to go to. It's multiple a day and time and, you know, Murphy's on the job. And, you know, the other day, we were going to to the Rockville Road structure fire, and lo and behold, we had a two-car accident with multiple patients at St. Matthew's Lane and Plaza Drive. And so, you know, Henrico helped us with that. So, yeah, it's reciprocated, and we try to help each other as often as we can. But again, I just want to ensure you that we don't go to the point that we leave our citizens uncovered. We make sure that we have adequate coverage in our county before we can go outside. And we would expect them to do the same when we call them, too, so.
Mr. Chairman, another real quick one, if nobody else. Just real quick, we will, I promise we'll keep you up here too much longer.
That's okay, sir.
Your inaugural, thank you.
Appreciate the question.
Just for the citizens that may not have the benefit of the charts and graphs and numbers that we have, as I understand it, we have response time standards, and we have a standard on the percentages of times that we hit those response times. And as I read all of this, the bottom line is that we're meeting or exceeding all of those standards? Is that a fair assessment?
We're close. We're close. So response time standards, the Virginia Office of EMS, Department of Health requires all localities in the state to identify response time standards related to emergency medical response. And we developed those in conjunction with your board, the county administrator, and the medical director. And so in Goochlin, I don't want you, when you hear these numbers, you have to understand when you're looking at averages and so forth, you know, you have a lot of response times that are a lot quicker. But we have response time standards. The 15-minute mark from the time the call comes in to the unit arrives on the scene from about Jackson Shop Road east, and then it's a 20-minute west of Jackson Shop Road into the west end of the county. And we're close to meeting that. Every time we can staff a fire station, put a unit in service, then we're able to get closer to that. The Virginia Office of EMS, the regulation says that we have to comply with that 90% of the time.
90%.
And then we have to account for the times that there's outliers.
Sure.
And so the medical director reviews that. And sometimes, it's a logical reason. For example, if it's an unsafe scene, then the the unit may have to stop down the street and wait for law enforcement to clear the scene so that it's explainable, or the address wasn't that well marked. But but we're very close to that, trying to meet those. And with the staffing model that that you all have adopted, it allows us to get closer to that. But we're not, we're not meeting the mark 90% of the time. But I don't think other localities, I think other localities are in a similar situation to us where where as their populations increase, citizens are increasing, call volume is going up, and you're, we're trying to put more resources in service.
So our challenge then, as we, is to exceed that standard and maintain that exceeded standard as the county grows. So that's our.
Absolutely. And you give us phenomenal support with the staffing plans and the support for volunteer personnel to continue to grow the department. We appreciate it.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. And I'll echo Mr. Peterson's comment about thanking you for stepping up and covering on the interim, and I know you'll do a great job. And if we can help you with anything, let us know.
Thank you. It's a pleasure, and thank you for the questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, introduction of new county's county staff. Ms. Kelly Parrish.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Bodeski. I'm Kelly Parrish, Director of Human Resources. And on behalf of the county administration, I am pleased to present new staff in economic development and information technology. Casey, would you stand, please? Due to her resignation and reorganization, Casey Verber joined the Economic Development Department as an Economic Development Coordinator on January 2nd. Casey comes to us from the town of Fuquay Varina in North Carolina, where she worked as a downtown development coordinator, managing events, retention, expansion, and development opportunities. She brings with her over 10 years of experience in economic development. Welcome, Casey.
Welcome.
David, would you please do? Due to her resignation, David Croker joined the IT department as as an application support specialist on January 2nd. Previously, he worked as at QS1 Data Systems, where he held a variety of IT positions through his 20-year tenure. Welcome to you.
Welcome, David.
That is all the new staff. Do you have any questions for our new employees?
They want to speak? I didn't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Welcome both of you to Goochlin County. Next, planning and development activity, it's in the pocket. Any questions for staff? The Planning Commission and Board of Zoning of Appeals report is also in the pocket in the accounts payable information. Any questions on those?
No.
Okay. Next is consent agenda. Mr. Bodeski, would you please give us an update?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there is only one item for your consideration tonight under consent, but I wanted to take a moment or two just to explain this particular item. This is an item that actually affects the Old Oaks community down in Crozier. We were notified by Virginia Department of Health of some issues with well water contamination, that the Virginia Department of Health was going to undertake a project to try to help resolve some of these particular residents' concerns. Over the years, the Department of Health have actually worked with these residents on putting filters into their homes and those kinds of interim solutions. However, they, in that particular area, is a well by Aqua Virginia that could actually provide community water services. Department of Health, one of the issues they had was is they wanted to try to solve this particular project, but it was going to take them about three years to go through state procurement and to try to manage this project. They actually came to the county and said, hey, look, we recognize these residents probably need this solved quicker. State procurement and bureaucracy is not going to allow us to do this as efficiently as we would recommend. Ask the county to actually take on the construction side and procurement side of this, and we've stepped up to assist with those procurements. This is an entirely state-funded project that we're managing here locally and help procure that actually cut this project into under a year. And so tonight's recommendation for you is to award a contract, an agreement with Filter's Choice Enterprises for $1,512,400 for the construction and contingency funds of the Old Oak Community Water Supply System and appropriate funds for the project. Again, these are not local funds, they are state funds that will flow through us, but this is a unique partnership, and this is an example of hopefully how we can get some things done a little more efficiently than maybe the state could on behalf of our residents. So, that, Mr. Chairman, I ask for the board's consideration on this consent agenda item.
Any questions or comments on this item?
I have one question. Mr. Bodeski, could you explain the difference? I see the bid was 1.571,550. Negotiations narrowed down to 1,512,400. But the consent agenda item asks us to appropriate 1.634,670. Can you explain the delta?
Ask Mr. Longshore to maybe assist with the total review of this, please.
So the, first of all, Matt Longshore, Director of Public Utilities. The original appropriation for that project was 137,000 for the initial engineering. So that's design and engineering. So there was some costs after that that were incurred that will also be appropriated, such as construction administration, construction inspection, stuff like that, that are more of a construction phase stuff. So the 1.512, I believe, million is for construction, and that's for the, for Filter's Choice. The appropriation of 1.6 will cover construction administration and construction inspection for the project. So that will go to our engineering firm for those construction phase services.
Thank you. That last part answered the question, who is that going, who is that going to? But regardless, it's all VDEQ funds in any way that have.
Correct. It will come, all funds are from DQ. That's correct.
VDEQ, all right. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just to, these are all VDEQ funds. It also mentions here that they've already been received. Is that the case? It says all, all funding for this project has been received. So it's not only their nickel, it's there's, we're not advancing any funds here, is that? Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the one item on the consent agenda, the authorization to enter into the agreement and the appropriation of the money as shown in the agenda item.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, consent agenda is approved. And now, next is our new business, and our first item is the assessment report.
Good afternoon, Chairman, board members, Mr. Bodeski. I'm Mary Ann Davis. I'm the Goochlin County assessor, and I'm presenting the real estate assessment figures. Okay, here we go. The highlights are assessments are made at market value. As of January 1st of each year, assessment notices are mailed on the 15th, and property owners have until the 15th to appeal their assessments. The 2019 summary value changes is a total taxable value net, or not including land use and new construction, is 6.3%. Of the 5.31 billion total taxable value, $141 million is in new construction, which is 3% overall value increase. Okay? New construction consists of 48% of commercial and 52% residential. The TCSD fair market values are at 1.1 billion, and the land use assessments are at 584 million. I have some charts here that helps to see that. The total taxable assessed value is at the 5.3 billion. Breaking down of the new construction that we had, the 144 million was, the county was the 73 million, and the TCSD was the 71 million. That included, that included the Audi dealership and the apartments, which was a big increase on that. The assessed valuation of this pie chart is based on residential to commercial percentages. At this point, it's 19.84%. That's commercial versus last year, 18.97. And this year, the residential is 80.16% versus last year, 81.03. And these percentages are based on fair market value. The Takahoe Creek Service District has the 1.131 billion. The 2019 growth of this is 13, 13% includes the 3.26 new construction and the 9.84 in The land use deferment that we have went up to 584. This equates to about $3 million in deferred tax, taxes that are not collected. In summary, the 2019 reassessment value changes of 6.3% is different than the November 2018 revenue forecast assumption of 3%. This increase is due to increasing construction costs and lack of improved properties for sale, making this a seller's market. 2020 revenue project, projection assumes an additional increase of 3% to 5%. And the staff will appeal, will report on the appeal activity in April. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Mary Ann, can you simply review the process that residents can use between now and the 15th and what their recourse is after the 15th?
Yes, in normal cases, people call in and they talk to the appraiser who is assigned to the area. If they're not satisfied with the opportunity to talk to the appraiser, then they can go out and we'll visit the property and inspect the property. And then the appraiser will review the assessments again. And then, after that, we notify them by letter of the change or no change. They have 30 days from the date of that letter to request Board of Equalization forms, for which we will send them, and they'll fill them out and give them back or send them back to us. And at that point, we have the Board of Equalization that usually meet in June, and so we will call them in advance of that, setting up a time to allow them to come in and talk to the Board of Equalization. And then, you know, that that pretty much precludes that part, and then from there on, they can go to court, serve the courts.
Just to simplify, there's two steps that a resident can take if they are displeased with their assessment notice. They can take an administrative process, which means contacting your office and having staff come out and evaluate the decision that was made on their assessment. Should they not like staff's decision, they have 30 days to appeal to an opportunity to be heard by a Board of Equalization. And that board can also overrule staff's recommendation in that process. So there's two steps that a resident can take simply if they disagree with their assessment.
Yes. But the 30 days is from the date of the letter that's sent to them.
So to stop the clock, they just need to contact the, to stop the February 15th, they, if they contact and say, verbally communicate and end up getting the appraiser for that area, that they've stopped the clock in terms of the February 15th being a.
Yes.
Deadline?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just for a minute, thank you for this report, by the way. This is, in a lot of respects, some good news. As you know, this board, listening to citizens. As you know, this board, listening to citizens, had adopted some, a vision for the future of the county and what we wanted to accomplish, and one of the things we heard from citizens was to concentrate economic development in those areas where it's appropriate, where there's the water and sewer to support it. And, and this, this shows that we've done that. In the Tuckahoe Creek Service District, you show the assessments there are increasing substantially. Another one of the goals, obviously, was to concentrate the growth in areas to help repay the debt, and that's, again, shown by these graphs, that the Tuckahoe Creek Service District assessments are growing fairly dramatically. So, those two goals are being reached. The other, another goal we heard was to, to make sure that we don't overburden the residential taxpayers, the citizens, with too much of a burden of the county's expenses, but to rather rebalance it more toward commercial so that the citizens aren't as burdened. And when this board first took over, I think we were about 15 percent or so, plus or minus of, of commercial, was 15 percent of our total collections. And of course, last year, you, you show that the commercial collections were about 18.9 percent, so we've moved from 15 to about 18. Now, this year, the assessment in 2019, it moves from 18.9 to 19.8, so we're going toward the 20. Generally, rule of thumb is somewhere between 25 percent and 30 of commercial. So, we've gone from 15 toward 20 and perhaps toward 25, toward a more sustainable, better balance, if you will. So, I just wanted to point out that we're accomplishing a number of those goals that the citizens shared with us and said, this is what we'd like you to do with the county going forward, so we make sure that we service the debt, we make sure we better balance the taxes from commercial and residential, that we concentrate the economic development in those areas where it's most appropriate, but also keep the county rural. And you see from the land use, the $3 million deferred tax revenue for land use, that's to help subsidize keeping the county rural as well. So, we're, we're trying to balance all those goals that were given to us, and this, this report thankfully shows that we're moving in the right direction across the board. So, thank you for that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield back.
I need a couple of questions on your, and obviously, I don't want to take a lot of time now, but this is the kind of stuff that the new guy needs to dig into to understand. There's a lot of information in here. Appreciate the report. Looking at the slides, could you, I'd like to just go quickly at your slides six, seven, and eight, just real quickly.
Okay, I see. Okay, six.
So, Mr. Peterson was just talking about that, that division right there, and he noted collections. He said that's how we're, that's what we're collecting. Obviously, the commercial and residential is taxed at the same, so I get that, but your note here says percentages are based on fair market value countywide. How does the land use play into that? Is...
Because...
Do you see where I'm going?
Yeah.
Do those percentages change if we're actually talking about what's collected?
Right, yeah.
And I would think because of land use. Is that correct?
Yeah, and this is, this is based on just fair market value. We haven't got that countywide on less...
And fair market value, you're counting fair market value even if a parcel is in land use?
Well, if it's...
This chart plugs in the fair market value of that property?
Yes, uh-huh. I mean, because I think totally, when you're looking at the percentages of, from where I worked in Henrico, I think they compare as well. It was based on market value, so if, you, if future, we want to do pie charts based on what's collected, I can do that as well.
I'm just, just, again, I'm just trying to understand...
No problem.
What I'm looking at. So, slide seven, didn't have, didn't have too much on that, but let me just look at it again.
Okay.
This is the number that, when we started talking about this a few weeks ago, the 2019 growth of 13.1 percent includes 3.26 new construction and 9.84 reassessment. So, that growth is, that growth would be both dollar, well...
It's all dollars.
It's all dollars, right.
Three percent, 3.2 percent is new.
New, that's the valuation of new construction.
Right.
And that's when a building permit or rather a CO is issued, right?
Exactly.
Okay. It's not on the books until a CO is issued.
Right.
Okay. All right, and then slide eight. When you say deferred revenue, that's just the annual chunk, right?
Yeah, it's the difference, the deferment is the difference between the market value and the land use value, that, that amount in between is the deferment or the agro, ag credit. And when you take that ag credit to the 584 million...
You come up with 3 million in deferred revenue.
Divided by 50, yeah, by 100 and divided by 53 cents, yes.
Now, it's only going to be deferred because of rollback, if we ever apply a rollback, we can only go back five years, right?
Five years plus current, so it's actually six.
Okay. All right, so kind of, our thinking is, if it stays in land use, if there's 3 million deferred revenue now, if it stays in land use another six years, that arguably is lost, lost revenue, right? I mean, it's permanently deferred.
Yeah, yeah, and we try to make sure that people who come into the program and so understands that, you know, this is a long-term investment, you don't do this for just a couple of years, and, you know, it really is, is for long-term.
Sure, sure. Do, do most counties in this area, probably with state, do most of them, I know our ordinance allows us to go back the five years, is that consistent with the practice in...
Yeah, yes, in fact, I believe that's state code.
I thought it was optional for...
It could be optional, but most, most localities...
Are gonna go for the full five-year plus current?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, lots, lots more for me to learn, but I appreciate the good information.
Other questions? Ms. Davis, did the value, the land use value increase this year at all?
Yes, a little bit, yeah. The agriculture part, I think, went up a little bit, like maybe $5 to $10 per acre.
So, so, did any new land go into land use as far as you know, or is the small increase just a change in the, in the value per acre?
Yeah, it's pretty much value per acre, because for as many people come in, they're probably as others are coming out, you know, different, you know, some property, property that sells, property owner may decide, look, I don't want to be a part of this program, I want to do something different with the property, they'll also negotiate that rollback in the, the settlement or the sale price. We've seen that. And then you have property, people who will buy splitting up the property, if they split it up, it becomes non-qualified because it's got to meet that minimum acreage. So, we've seen some of that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Davis, appreciate it. Next, Mr. Drumright will take us through legislative agenda and where we stand.
Good afternoon, Paul Drumright, Administrative Services Manager, and it is my pleasure to give you a brief update on the 2019 General Assembly session so far. We're going to focus real quickly on a couple areas here, just on this General Assembly session itself, some of the county's priority requests, and then a couple bills of interest. I know there is an exciting presentation coming after me, so I'm going to try to be as quickly as possible so we can get to that fun information. Right here on the screen, we have the current schedule, so the General Assembly convened on January 9th. Today is the infamous crossover day, and I'm pleased to report both the House and the Senate have completed their work already, and so if anything hasn't been acted on today, it's dead. So, moving forward, they'll have a journey in February 23rd, and then they'll come back for the reconvened session on April 3rd. So far to date, there have been 2,394 pieces of legislation filed. Good news is, we're not going over all of those today. So, moving on, as you will recall with the legislative agenda, our one major priority, the first one, was to clarify the capacity of public facilities as it was used to evaluate proffer submissions and residential rezoning requests. We were fortunate to have both Delegate Ware and Delegate McGuire to patron a bill HB 1801, and then Senator Peak, patron SB 1143, that addressed our request, that actually made changes to the proffer law and actually eliminated the capacity language. Unfortunately, as you can see on the screen, those bills did not make it. But that is not, we, thanks to County Attorney Tara McGee and other staff, we put up a valiant effort downtown with our delegation. They, they did some heavy lifting for us to advance our bills and to get them heard, but those did not make it. The good news is that there was other proffer bills going through. They don't go as far as we wanted, they didn't address everything we wanted, but the proffer, there are two proffer bills that are right now active, HB 2342 and SB 1373, which are identical in their language, have passed their houses and have gone over to the other house. Those bills mirrored a lot of what ours did, except for ours went further in eliminating that capacity language. So, these will continue on their track. We do not expect any opposition to it. There was a huge coalition of, the Coalition for Higher Growth Localities had negotiated with the home builders to work on these bills and get this in those forms where they are now. And so, they, they should advance on, we will address at a later date, staff will address with the board, the exact impact and how that will lead to future changes. But so for now, it looks like there will be some proffer reform. I can tell you that not all localities are happy, they still want to see more reform, so we'll see where it goes. The two impact fee bills that had been carried over from last year, they both met a untimely demise in the Senate Local Government Committee, which was expected, so for now, that is off the table. Moving on, the second priority request was related to broadband. There was one bill, HB 2141, which is making a change to the local service districts language in the state code, which would allow localities to do service districts for last mile broad, broadband. So, it doesn't cover the middle mile, but it covers the last mile from, to the home. That has moved over to the Senate, and that had majority support. This would just be another tool in the toolbox for localities to, as you go forward. Another one that is up there, HB 2691, is a bill that would direct the State Corporation Commission to set up pilot broadband projects with Dominion, Appalachian Power Company, and so to do, start doing some pilot projects with the regulated utilities. This will be interesting to watch as it goes through, and then as the State Corporation Commission takes it and has to then work with those utilities. Dominion had put out a report earlier that said, basically, they could do broadband, they just needed somebody to tell them to do it. Somebody's telling them to do it.
There you go.
Also related to broadband, both budget bills, HB 1700 and SB 1100, had 50 million proposed by the governor in fiscal year '20 for broadband currently, and this fiscal year, there's only 4 million. So, that was a huge increase for what is called the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative. This is a grant program where localities have to partner with a private provider to get the money and to do broadband expansion. As you can see below that, the House Appropriations is recommending 20 million, which would bring 24 million for the biennium. Senate Finance is recommending 31 million, which would bring 35 million for the biennium. So, we're going to be somewhere in that, that ballpark as they negotiate the budget. Moving on to the other priority request of the county, we had nothing related to transportation of sludge, reimbursement for the compensation and expense of the Electoral Board and the General Register did have a number of budget amendments that were filed to bring that up to 100 percent or to bring it in line with other constitutional officers. Unfortunately, those didn't make it. Instead, in the Senate Finance Subcommittee, they are recommending a study of the General Register salaries relative to the other constitutional officers. So, basically, a study to see where they should be, so. And then the last one about reimbursement for political party primaries had no legislation either. Moving on, we have three bills of interest that we want to touch on. This first one up there has not gotten a lot of notice, and that's because localities worked with the administration to get changes made. This bill, HB 2178, which is a Virginia voter registration system, security plans and procedures, remanding security risks, was a bill that was being brought on behalf of the State Board of Elections to create regulations that localities had to make, meet, and then have to report on annually. Thanks to Randy Buzzard and to Ryan Mulligan, they brought that to attention. We were able to work with Chesapeake County, Orange County, as well as VML and VACO to get changes made to that where localities actually get a seat at the table in creating those regulations. And then there's going to be an advisory board to review those regulations every year, plus they made it where you have to have those regulations reviewed by November 30th so that they can take that into effect for localities into a budget, as you're doing the budget. It's still an unfunded mandate, but it is better being at the table than looking in from the window. Moving on, HB 2364 relates to agritourism in weddings. This bill was to allow farm properties that are open to the public to be able to host weddings, adding that as one of the things that they could do. Unfortunately, our concern, and we opposed this bill, was related to how it would upend the Board of Supervisors' current policy and process related to balancing the property owner's interest versus the neighboring property owner's interest related to allowing weddings in rural areas and on property and such. I'm happy to report that bill met an untimely demise, which was good news. Then this last one, HB 2640, the machinery and tools tax bill, was changing a definition in the bill. And changing that definition, it was going to make it very complicated for the Commissioner of Revenues Office to have to do machinery and tools tax assessments, and it was gonna, it was a problem bill. We did oppose it, and I'm happy to report it did meet an untimely demise yesterday. It didn't even get a recorded vote. It had a voice vote where it got turned down. It would have taken away one more tool in the toolbox for localities, and so that's why we were opposing it. So, there's still the ability to make changes to machinery and tools, but we just now have more tools. We got the tools that we have. And that is everything that we have going on in the General Assembly. Happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you, Paul, good, good report. I, I've not paid close attention to some of these, but, and I don't totally forget if you don't know off the top of your head these answers, but 2141, the service district, broadband telecommunications, that's still alive, it's going, what is our, and I should maybe embarrass myself, I should probably know what our position is, but what is our position and what is VACO's position on this legislation?
So, we did not take a position on that bill.
Okay.
We did not ask the board to take a position on that bill.
Don't remember that one, yeah.
The, I included that as part because it was related to broadband, there was interest on that.
Yes.
VACO supported the bill. That bill had 100, 100 percent support out of committee, had, I believe, 99 percent, or 99 votes out of the House. So, it is on a, I think, a good track to make its way out, because it is a permissive bill, where it allows localities to do something, but it doesn't require localities to do something. And so, those, you know, just, again, adds another tool to the toolbox.
I think just philosophically, it's kind of interesting to think this through, but it looks like a lot of this has already been here. It's, this, the bill says it's to amend and reenact, but broadband and telecommunications services is in italics, so maybe what I'm looking at is just showing the changes, maybe this, maybe these service districts...
Yes.
Because there's a slew of things you can create service districts.
It is, I printed it out, it is a huge section, and so it's, it's just a tiny piece...
But it's something, it's something just to sort of think about philosophically, I mean, that's, again, that's why you need to pay attention to local elections, what is the Board of Supervisors going to do, because this would, would permit, you say, the local governing body to require owners or tenants of any property in the district to connect to such system or systems. So, one way to get the broadband numbers up, make everybody connected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of.
And as I said, so we didn't take a position on it, and right now, staff is not necessarily advocating is that a way to go related to broadband.
I understand.
Just, it's always nice to have more tools.
I understand, yeah.
And one question that I had about this bill is that if you look at the language, it says that a locality will, would be allowed to create, maintain, and provide the service, which is currently not allowed in the broadband.
And I believe it also allows us to then contract it out as well.
Right.
So we can turn around and have a private provider do it for us. But the key is, it is for that last mile, so we can't set up a middle mile network.
That was my other question, where do you see that limitation?
I don't know the exact specific here, but I was actually in the committee when it was presented, and I can point it out later.
That's fine.
For you. But the patron of it made it very clear that this was a last mile solution.
Yeah. To me, the reason I didn't worry about it too much is because it's permitting us, allowing us to do it, we don't have to do it. It's up to us to elect the right people that might do it the right way. But, but it does enable us to do more if we need to. We have experience with service districts that have not been, not been very good, but anyway.
Look at the legislation or the statute, you've got to wonder what's going up in town of Front Royal. But anyway, that's down at the bottom of the bill. Kind of crazy.
Well, a lot of the broadband bills, because of the way it was forbidden, specifically state which localities can actually implement it. And they've done it by exception. I think the first bill allowed it because Bristol, Virginia had already done it, so they said, except for Bristol, you're not allowed. And so I think when other localities have come across, I think Front Royal was one of those that came across and said, we want to do this, and their legislators pushed it and got it.
Well, it says, the town of Front Royal can create a service district to create facilities to maintain, operate, and to get rid of rats and skunks. Anyway. Nice service district. All right, look, that's all I have.
Thank you. Good way to end it. Any other questions for Paul? Thank you, Paul, and thank you and Tara and everyone else that has really gone downtown. Just parking is enough of a sacrifice. But going downtown and being there, speaking, you know, I've heard from our legislators about the great work you guys have done and how well you've represented us, little old Gushland.
I will have to say, they are a great delegation to work with, very willing to listen to our concerns. They don't always, every time, go the way we want, but they are there, willing to take our input, so.
Thank you very much.
I wouldn't trade them in for anything.
And before we get the next set of great news, can we take a 10-minute break?
Thank you. Here's the chair. I don't know if I can make it.
Let's get back together. Ms. Horlacher, would you give us the great news for the second quarter?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Barbara Horlacher, Director of Financial Services, and I'm here to discuss the second quarter projections. So second quarter projections are done based on the trends that you have for the first six months, and they're projecting out what will happen for the entire fiscal year. So after six months, you have a fairly good idea, but it's still halfway through the year, so some things could change. The projection for revenues stands at 56.3 million. It's about 2.8 million over our budget, mainly due to increases in personal property tax, bank stock tax, and our interest revenue. Expenditures, we usually overall for the year run about a million, sometimes a little more under budget, so that's my projection for the second quarter. I'll be bringing back more detailed projections on the individual departments after the third quarter, which would leave us with an operating surplus of about $4 million. At that point, then, we get into our transfers, which are our use of one-time funds. We always transfer to the Office of Children's Services, that's our state mandated program. And then, of course, we plan and budget for transfers to the Capital Projects Fund. And you can see that that, this year, has been 6.8 million dollars. We started out with a budget of about 5.9 million, and then since then, we have allocated some more to the CIP during the year. This, if these are the results, this would give us an overall change in fund balance of 3.6 million, a decrease, which would give us an ending funding, fund balance of about 32.6. And you can see below that, those numbers, I've broken out how we would allocate those and apportion those. The unassigned fund balance would stay the same at 18.4 million dollars. Below these numbers, I now present our compliance numbers so that we can see where we're running for the year. Our policy is that debt service expenditures should never be greater than 10% of general fund expenditures, and I believe we'll end the year where there'll be close to 7%. So that gives us an excess of 3% on our policy. Unassigned fund balance, if we end up this way, will be 29%. Our target is 25%. That puts us 4% over the target. And revenue stabilization, we adjust that every year based on the following year's budget, and so we'll have that exactly at 3%. And I reviewed these results with the Audit Committee earlier, and we discussed a few points, but there were no major issues with it at this point. Does anybody have questions about this before I go on to the transfer?
Questions for Ms. Horlacher.
Okay. We are requesting today that you approve a transfer. This is a CIP transfer, and it's simply a transfer from one project to another. We need to replace the HVAC in the server rooms, and that will be a cost of $107,000. It has a budget of $90,000, which was set about two years ago. So there, the IT director has some excess funds in his cyclical replacement budget, and he would, we would like to transfer those funds and recommend that you approve transferring those funds to the HVAC project.
Any questions for Ms. Horlacher on the transfer?
And, Mr. Chairman, this does come with a consideration of support from the Budget and Finance Committee, Budget and Audit Committee. That met earlier today.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the transfer as requested.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. And now, Ms. Hunter, to give us an update on the zoning ordinance rewrite.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joanne Hunter, Director of Community Development. As Mr. Alvarez indicated, we're going to be doing an update on the zoning rewrite. On your dais, you should have a blue, very large blue binder in front of you. Yeah, that big one. There is some information in there, there's lots of room for more stuff to be added to, which we will be doing over the next couple of months, but that is a large percentage of the rewrite. I'd estimate that's probably about 35 or 40% of the rewrite in there so far, so we're in a little bit behind schedule, but in pretty good shape. As you can recall, why we're doing the rewrite is this was a implementation strategy of the comprehensive plan to do the rewrite, and the goals of the rewrite is to modernize, simplify, and clarify our existing ordinance. Our general ordinance is 50 years old. It is not a terrible ordinance. It is, we are still getting good development out of it. You can see our new development that's occurring, especially in the Centerville area, is attractive development, the residential development that we're getting with our existing codes, our successful neighborhoods, desirable places to live. So there's not a huge issue with our code, however, because it's so old, it needs some updating, and because there's been so many updates through the time, there's been some errors in it and missing sections. So we're not throwing out the whole ordinance, we're sort of improving and modernizing the existing ordinance. So some of the goals of it is, you know, again, to correct some of those errors. We want to create it a much more readable document, you know, again, sort of with the same concept like we did with the comprehensive plan, going from pages and pages of text to more of diagrams and charts so that people can easily find information and use that information. We want to reformat it things, because right now, in our code, there's no real easy place to put something, so every time we add something, we add it to our supplemental section and you can never find anything. So we want to make sure there's areas that are appropriate for, to add future sections. And one of the big things is we really want to align our zoning ordinance with other county plans and policies. So the comprehensive plan is sort of the, you know, the key guiding document for the planning department and for the county, and we want to make sure that our zoning ordinance falls in line and implements those policies of the comprehensive plan, so those documents should be working together. And that's why we really want to make sure that we make a lot of changes to the ordinance to make sure that we're implementing the comprehensive plan. We also want to add modern uses, some of the things that have occurred, that's going on right now that weren't considered 50 years ago. If you look at a lot of the ordinance amendments that we have done recently, a lot of them are dealing with new uses such as data centers and the community care retirement communities and things like that, that we're adding to our code that had never been complicated, contemplated prior to that. We want to make sure that it were in compliance with the state and federal code. We want to codify some of our existing practices. And then, very important as part of this rewrite is we really don't want to try to make anybody non-conforming. So we want, don't want to make the restriction, make it more restrictive. It's actually making things less restrictive and encouraging people to be able to do, have more flexibility with their property. So what we've done so far, I'm going to go through this quickly, we've taken a look at a lot of other localities to see what we liked and didn't like about people's zoning ordinance. We went through the entire comprehensive plan and identified different things, action items in there that need to be included in the zoning rewrite. We did do an issuance analysis of our code, where we, we staff finds that we always have problems implementing the code, where it's not clear, where some staff members may interpret it one way, another staff member should interpret it another way. We don't want that to happen anymore. We want everything to be clear so that any person, whether you're on staff, a developer or a citizen, everybody can read it and interpret something the same way. We did a detailed matrix for every use to see where we have inconsistencies and repetition, like this is an example, this is probably about 500 entries long, this is just the office section, and it shows the different ways. Each one of those all say the same thing, but each district calls it something different. So that's just an example of some of the things we want to do. So what we've done so far, and what I want to go over with you today, is the Developer Roundtable that occurred in November. We've completed drafts of the general provision section, the agricultural section, residential, commercial, and industrial, and we've also completed a draft of the use district, use standards. At the end of each one of those, we'll stop and have some questions and discussions. During those, there are going to be some discussion point items for the board that I'm going to be looking for some direction from, from you on that. So I'll try to go as quickly as possible, it's a lot of information, however, it's really important information, and it's going to serve the county for a long time in the future, so it is very important. So back, this is the Developer Roundtable. I originally had this at the end of the presentation, and then as I thought about it, it would be really helpful for you to have it in the beginning because some of our recommendations are based on the Developer Roundtable. So I'm going to review that with you first. We had this meeting back in November 6th of last year. We invited engineers, attorneys, architects, different developers who do a lot of work in the area. We had 17 attendees, and it was really a free-form meeting. We had four questions for them. Are there sections of the code that are difficult to understand? What sections of the code do you consider burdensome? Are there sections of the code that lead to unnecessary time delays? And what changes and improvements would you like to see made to the code? We didn't really, not really sure what we were going to get when we had that meeting. Sometimes when you have an open-ended meeting, you might just get blasted and they tell you everything's terrible. However, it was a really productive meeting, we had really good feedback from them, and many of the comments that they had made had also occurred in staff's code analysis of the thing. So we were on the same page on a lot of things of where there needed to be improvements in the code. So I'm going to go over the summary of each one of the comments that they made. The last sections are comments dealing with the zoning districts, so that, that'll be fresh in your mind when I roll into the zoning districts. So there was, one of the original comments that somebody made that hadn't really thought about it this way is that, you know, when the code was written 50 years ago, there wasn't really utilities in the county, so there's been a lot of, you know, modern advancement, fire suppression utilities and all that, and that needs to be taken account into the code. So that was an interesting way to think about it. One of, a lot of the comments related to parking, that our parking requirements are outdated, we have too much, too much parking required in our office parks, entertainment, shopping centers, and apartments. That is sort of a nationwide thing that everybody's seeing, you know, you know, 20 years ago, everybody, you needed lots of parking spaces. Now you drive past a shopping center and 90% of the time, it's, you know, half full or a third full, except on Black Friday or some of those big shopping days. So I think everybody is sort of reevaluating parking, and we'll be doing that also as well when we get to that section. They recommended some, looking at our multifamily parking requirements and different parking requirements, that they had made some recommendations on where it could be reduced. There were some questions on shopping centers, that our code really needs to define shopping centers more clearly, we need to develop drive-through specifications independent of shopping centers, and to look at how we look at setbacks for shopping centers. So that is another thing that we'll be looking at through this rewrite. A lot of questions and comments on our landscape ordinance. We had indicated that we would be redoing our ordinance. Right now, our ordinance is, our landscaping ordinance is part of one of our most difficult issues to implement. It's one of those that staff interprets differently, which is a big problem. So we, they, we told them we would be doing that completely differently. They did want to make sure that we did not make anything that was too limiting, they wanted us to provide lots of different options, to maintain some flexibility so that each site could have some design uniqueness. They really wanted all of the requirements to be put in a chart, which sort of falls in line with how we were already doing things, moving things to charts when we could, define buffers between land uses better, and have minimal uses, buffers between commercial uses. They felt like when you have like similar uses adjacent to each other, the buffer should be minimal, but they were more tolerable of bigger buffers if there were different types of uses. Floodplain ordinance, they indicated that that needs revamping. One person had indicated that they don't believe that the county should have a design overlay district anymore, that that should all be just part of the zoning ordinance. That's an interesting concept, however, that would make development in some of the rural areas and things like that a little bit tougher, it would increase the standards there. They wanted us to give some consideration to end-of-life uses for the quarries, some comments about reworking our subdivision ordinance, that would occur right after we complete the zoning rewrite, and they did support codifying our existing policies such as the pre-application process and things like that. So these next few comments that came from the Developer Roundtable are going to be comments that are going to be talking points when I get to that in the zoning section, but I just want to make you aware of them now. There was a comment that we should add CCRCs, which is the Continuing Care Retirement Community, to the B1 district. This was an ordinance amendment we recently updated and purposely did not put it in the B1 district. Incentives and bonuses was also discussed. Alamooral County does a 30%, if they do require 30% of a development to be reserved for workforce housing, they can get a 10% density increase. So there was some discussion about that. There was a question about setbacks, and should we have little reduced setbacks in adult communities? I'll go into that during the residential section. And then some questions about the FAR, and do we really need it? And typically, it's for urban areas, but we'll go into that when we get a little bit closer. They did indicate that they would like some leeway on projections. The way that our existing code is written is, if you have a front setback of 30 feet, nothing can project into that 30 feet. You can't put a front stoop, you can't put a bay window, you can't put anything that can project into that. You can't put a front stoop, you can't put a bay window, you can't put anything that can project into that stuff thing. When the building inspectors go out, they run a tape at 30 feet, nothing can be in that. A lot of other localities do have some projections where you can project certain things like stoops and windows and fireplaces and gutters into that projection. We are looking at that, we're actually benchmarking it right now and that may be something we'll be bringing back to you later as part of the thing, as part of the additional sections of the rewrite. There was some discussion about the environmental incentives in the RPUD district and how those weren't very workable and the development community's recommendation was to remove them. There was questions about how they, how you draw the density in the RPUD. We've also removed that section. And then they, the last two, they wanted us to consider a new district for townhomes. And then they'd also see a new, like to see a new district with a little higher density. Both of these are going to be part of the discussion point later in the, in the presentation. They are very complicated concepts for the county. My recommendation is it is something we need to look at, but this may not be the right time to look at it. We've got a short time with the rewrite. I think if we want to start looking at where we want higher density or if we want to consider townhouses, I really think that's appropriate to be part of our next comprehensive plan and look at it holistically on where it should be located in the county and not try to shoehorn it in with this rewrite. So again, these are the six sections that have been completed in a draft form. We'll have to note that Tara has not participated in reviewing these yet. She got her notebook at the same time you did. However, Ms. Marshall had been part of our weekly meetings on the rewrite. So there has been some input from the county attorney's office, but these are all in draft forms. And I do anticipate there'd be some wordsmithing to be done by the county attorney's office. But I don't anticipate holistic changes because they were involved in the process and have signed off on the format and things like that. So I'm going to ask you go to your notebook. There are some notebooks in the back if the, anybody wants to follow along. So we're going to go through the general provision section. That's going to be the first tab, which is the white tab in your book. Our ordinance, this would be the very beginning of the ordinance. It sort of just gives you the lay of the land, the who, who, what, why, how do you do a zoning ordinance? So it talks about what the ordinance is called, why we have authority to do it through the state code, what the purpose is. It gives you some of the general rules such as if it says shell, you have to do it. If it's may, it's not mandatory. It gives you information on, you know, what districts are in the county, how the district boundary lines are designed. Like they goes, the district boundary goes to the center line of a road, if there's a water feature, things like that. So it's really just gives you some basic background information, nothing, nothing earth shattering. So the next section, we're going to move into the zoning districts. So we're going to go to the green tab, which is our agricultural districts. And on the screen, if you would turn to the rear, I did want to show you the zoning map. As we talk through these districts, I wanted to show you the zoning map. The two, it doesn't look so green there, but the, the two large colors are both green. The eastern side of the county is sort of split down the middle is our A2 agricultural limit zone, limited zoning. Right about 607, which is Jackson Shop Road, everything to the west of there is zoned A1, which is our agricultural limited district. And so those are the two districts that we're going to be talking about right now. A lot of zoning ordinances are pyramid zoning, such as when you are in a A1 district, that's less intense. A2 is a little more intense. Ours is very different. Ours is geographic based. It's east and west part of the county. So that's a little bit different than other localities. So each district is set up in the same way. So the white is how our existing district is set up and then the yellow is how we've made, modified it, made changes to it. We originally had some strike-through versions, like how we usually bring to you ordinance amendments. However, there's so much strike-through, it just was a mess. So we're going to try to deliberately show you each change and have it written down, what each change is in each district. So the, each section starts with the first section, which is the statement of intent. We're going to continue that with each district. However, we're revising it and shortening it and clarifying those statement of intents. Sometimes the statement of intents went off into these very long flowy statements that we like quiet residential neighborhoods and things like that. None of that is enforceable, none of that makes sense. It's not the appropriate place for that. That should be more on the comp plan. So those sorts of things are being taken out. And then the end section, the last sentence of every statement of intent, it ties it specifically back to the comprehensive plan. This district would be appropriate in the, for areas designated on the comprehensive plan for, so that you know exactly. That way if someone is asking for rezoning to an RPUD, it gives you exactly what district, you know, what's appropriate in that section. So sections two and three over the existing code, our uses and structures by right and conditional uses, we're combining them all into one, one charts that you don't have to roll through 40, 40 things in one section and 38 the next and try to find your, your use. The next change is permitted accessory uses. Those are all in one single chart. And then sections five through eight all have area regulations, frontage width setbacks, corner lot setbacks. They are all in combined into one chart. So if you look at the A1 district in your book, you have your very short condensed statement of intent with that last statement saying that this is generally designated on the comprehensive plan as rural enhancement area. There's, each use is either permitted or CUP use, so it lists all the uses in it. We have them broken up into categories such as agriculture, residential, utilities, commercials so that you can find something a little bit easier. And then the next would be section 102, which lists all of those requirements. You know, those are the setbacks, the width, the frontage, all of that is in one chart instead of, typically is about four or five pages of text in our existing code. So again, the changes to all the districts was what I just went over. So right now there's going to be with our new proposed ordinance, there's going to be three ways that you could do, develop something in each district. You could do it by right, you could do it by right with development standards. This is a new concept for us, but it's things like we did with the short-term rental hosted, saying, okay, if, if you're, if you can meet these standards and you can meet all these standards, then you can do it by right. And many of those will say, if you can't meet those standards, but you still want to do it, you can ask for a conditional use permit. So it, it provides some more structure and some more standards, but it, for a very simple use, it takes away the requirement for someone to come in for a CUP use, for a use that we do not think would be necessarily very impactful to a surrounding community and then continue to have CUP uses. So these are, we have currently four agricultural districts. A1, which is the western part of the county, A2, eastern part. A3 is our intensive swine facilities, which is what we're required by the state code to have a district that allows these. And then a forestal conservation district. So right now I'm going to concentrate on the A1 and A2. And one of our big focuses for all of the districts is going through and looking at other localities and make sure that there's opportunities and different uses that are available to people in Goochland to use their land that are appropriate. So we went through lots of different residential localities, ordinances to see other ag uses that are appropriate to add to the community. We also talked to people at the PDC about appropriate uses to add. So these are the uses that we would be adding as by right uses. Community gardens, farm operations, greenhouse nursery, production, wetland mitigation banks, taxidermy shops, some of these non-agricultural type uses, government buildings, family day home, less than four children. That's a state code requirement, but we've never added it to our code. Assisted living facility and group home of eight or fewer. Again, that's a state code requirement, so we'd be making the code in compliance with the state code. Park and ride facility and Virginia, I mean, Virginia, vehicle charging stations. So this is one of the first ones that we'd be adding with new by right uses with development standards. We've come up with this new term agricultural support uses. This would require a new definition, but it would be people who, definition would be include that people are on a farm. There is minor things that they could do in addition to just farming, such as pick your own, farm sales, equipment things, things like that. And then we'll go over the definitions later. And then with the development standards that say it's, you know, not on a shared private road, the activities don't occur, you know, after sunset, things like that. So that's one of the things we're adding as development standards, again, to encourage some more agro-business, agritourism activities and ways for people to use their farms without having to sell them. And then another thing that we came up with is, and this is similar to what we did with the short-term rentals, is we have seen an enormous number of accessory apartment CUPs come through in the last year, year and a half. That's much more popular now. Multi-generational level living is, is popular. It's also another way to have some affordable housing in the county. So only in the A1 and A2, we are recommending that the accessory apartment attached would be allowed by right without a CUP if they were able to meet development standards. So this is the same thing we did with the short-term rental hosted. We did it for the ag districts, not for the residential districts. So this would just be for the ags, that if they were attached and they met these standards, that they would only be allowed for single-family, you could only have one accessory apartment. It had to be attached to the principal dwelling unit. Only persons related to the resident could reside in the second dwelling unit. They could not rent it separately. They had to have a working carbon dioxide. So again, these are the CUP conditions you always see. They have to have emergency access. We did put this in there that we wanted the gross floor area not to exceed 25%. So that kind of keeps it small and not somebody building this mega mansion, you know, second dwelling onto the same house. They have to provide parking. And then this last one is the key, that if they want to do this and they can't meet all these standards or if they want to build something a little bit bigger, they can come back and ask for a CUP.
Is that generally how you're going to handle the development standards? If you, if you can't meet your development standards, get a CUP or will have to be said in everyone whether or not that.
It's, some of them can, some of them will and some will not.
If I may, that slide that you review of residential districts, is that, is that A1 and A2? Are you, are you still talking A1 and A2?
Yes, I'm only talking A1 and A2 here.
Okay, so you're, I don't want to, no, you keep going.
Go ahead.
Well, your Article 6 residential rural district RR, that chart shows accessory apartment as permitted by right. So accessory apartment is permitted by right also in.
RR and RP, it's RR, it's all larger lots, you're correct. It's our, it's, it's once you get to the subdivision sized lots is when we.
That when this, when this drops, this by right drops off?
Yes.
Got it, thanks.
So these would be the uses that would be added with development standards. Some of those are already in there, like biosolids already has a different section that, that there's biosolids in. So now we would just be taking that and referring it to that development standard section. Accessory apartments, agricultural support, bed and breakfast, biosolids. So you see there's a number of lists of uses that would be permitted by right with development standards. And then also we adding a number of CUP uses to the A1 and A2. Again, giving more flexibility to property owners. Accessory apartments detached, farm distribution hubs, farm and feed stores, livestock markets, car wash, convenience stores. Again, some of these uses are currently already in A1 and A2. They just were in before there was ever a code or, or they're just grandfathered. So this would be allowing them to be by right, adult daycare centers, those types of uses. We also went through and changed some names such as single wide and double wide manufactured homes. Those are not, sort of not the, the politically correct term anymore. They're now called manufactured homes. Fruit and vegetable stands become forest farm stands. We talk about lodges and hunting clubs. We're just changing those to clubs and private, clubs comma private. So you could see there's some name changes that just made things easier to find in the code. So those are some of the changes. The A3 district is our agricultural intensive. It's a, it's where you can do abattoirs and intensive swine facilities. The state code requires you to have a district where this can be done by right. So most localities created a new district. One thing we did do is our A3 district only allowed you to do the intensive swine. You couldn't do anything else. So we did add in that they could have any uses in the A1 and A2 so that if they wanted to do other things on their property, they could. The forestal conservation open space district has been in our code for over 20 years. It allows basically just forestal and a few other agricultural uses. Nobody has ever used it. There's really no incentive to use it, so we're recommending it be deleted. You'll see that in a couple different occasions. If somebody's not using the code, we don't need to have it in there. And, and to me, I didn't see any incentive for anybody to rezone to that. So that would be one of our recommendations. So the decision points for the, for the agricultural district is, are you okay with deleting the forestal conservation, which in my opinion seems to be a no-brainer? Does everybody seem okay with that? Okay, and then are you okay with the accessory apartments attached to be by right with standards? Or do you want to see each one of those coming in as a CUP? And this would again, only be in A1 and A2 RR and RP. These would be the larger, you know, two acre lots or more, which is the same as what we did for short-term rental hosted.
Just to clarify, that would be, the conditions include related family members, no rentals, just kind of extension of the primary residence.
It could not be rented and it could not, it, it has to be through a family member and it cannot be rented outside. Now again, because they wouldn't be coming through a permit, we may not know who's renting it and things like that. So there is a risk involved with that.
That'd be handled through the complaint process if there was an issue.
Any concerns with that or? I don't know enough, but there's a, you talk, is there a cross-section that some of these are, where did I see here?
We've had several come before us and it's been no complaints and we've approved them all.
I guess the accessory apartment attached in accordance with section 4.X. But that 4.X is where we're going to see the list of things that Mr..
Right, and those were on the screen. They're just, there's not a place, it was, it's a placeholder for once the. Yeah, so it's three pages of conditions.
All those things are there.
Yeah, and those are all the conditions that we use in the CUP. And we base this decision based on the same thing as the short-term rental hosted, that if it's, if you're living in your house and you're renting a portion of it, you're going to be much more cautious and careful than if it's a separate, you know, you own 20 acres and it's a separate cottage that's 10, 10, you know, way down, a mile could be, you know, significantly different, farther away from your property. So these are only for attached accessory apartments.
If you don't mind, let me just go back for a real basic thing here. I love your charts. That's awesome. It makes it a lot easier. And what you have is, is P for permitted and or CUP.
Yes.
Okay, how are you designated the ones that are going to require, that have developmental standards?
Yeah, so if you go, if you want to go to A1, the first page, okay, see the third one down. It says agricultural support uses in accordance with section 4.X. That's going to be the development standard.
So there's not a separate classification.
Right, so the next one is biosolids in accordance with section 4.X. Again, that's just a placeholder. Once we have all the sections in place, we will, that will have, it'll give tell you where specifically to go through.
So section 4.X is what drives you to.
Yes.
Got you, okay.
And it's going to be 4.1, 4.2 and when all the uses get in there.
All right, so back on these attached dwellings, where in here does it say that the main residence has to be owner occupied?
So if you go to page two and you go under, remember still. So if you go to page two and you go under, we're still on A1. If you go to page two, under the residential category, you'll see the left-hand side, you'll see residential.
Right.
The first one is accessory apartment attached in accordance with Section 4.X.
Right.
And then below that is accessory apartment detached. And if you roll over, it's a CUP use.
Right. So the 4.X, where's the 4.X at?
Go back behind the orange tab.
Oh, okay.
That's going to be, it's?
And it's like four, page 204, 4-H204 is residential standards. And that's about six, six or so pages in behind the orange tab, five pages.
And again, so those, those placeholders, we didn't go ahead and put in the number now because they're going to be shifting and changing as we get comments. So whenever you see an X, that's just a placeholder.
Yep.
So my question is that it says accessory apartments are allowed as accessory uses only to single-family detached dwellings. But that could be rented out as well, right?
No, because the standards say it can't be rented.
Number four, A4, only persons relating to a resident of the principal dwelling shall reside in the second dwelling unit.
And number five says the second dwelling unit may not be rented separately.
But not, I'm not talking about the second unit, I'm talking about the main unit.
Now, that's, that's a point. So you want to make sure that the main unit's not rented also.
I want it to be owner-occupied.
Okay. Owner-occupied, that makes sense. That's a good point.
We can take a look at that. It is difficult under land use to make a distinction between owners and renters.
Yeah, see, that's, these are the kind of things that make me not want to do this by right. Although I can see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I mean, we see a lot of them and you're right, Mr. Chairman, we've approved every one, but I think there's a lot of factors here.
And if you're not comfortable with it, it's, it's a quick change to just make it as a CUP use.
Well, does it need to be a CUP use or can one of the conditions be, a home must be owner-occupied?
That's the, you run into a bit of a legal problem.
She's saying that's a problem.
Land use-wise, the law does not believe you should care whether it's an owner or a renter.
So they'd have to be related to the renter, the second, or if, or if the owner moved out, then they would be out of compliance.
So you could rent the entire property, a guest house and the main house and have two, you know, and have your in-laws live in the house? You can't, what is already prohibited is allowing one of the dwellings to be rented instead of occupied by a family member. Either way, both of them have to be occupied by relatives. But right now, and as is legally permissible, it doesn't matter whether the occupants are all renting or owners, as long as they're related. We are entitled to say renting a piece of property separate on, is a commercial activity. We're not allowed to say you people who are paying rent should be looked at differently than people who pay a mortgage. I would guess?
The renter, the tenant, if they're renting the main property, they're not going to be applying for this.
If, if they are a renter of the main structure, then their parents or adult children can live in the other house. What you cannot do, under any circumstance, is be in the main house and have the small house rented by someone unrelated to you. That can't happen. But if it's you and your parents or you and your children, whether you're paying a mortgage or a rent, it doesn't matter for the occupancy of both of them by related people. Joanne, have you had a CUP, if you can recall, where the folks have been renting the main house?
Not that I can recall in the last five years.
Not that it couldn't happen, but I was just curious if you, if you knew of that.
After this, I think we had a bed and breakfast or?
Yeah.
Airbnb that was not where the owner doesn't live on the property, but I don't think we've had one of these.
But if, if this makes you uncomfortable, it's, we can just pull it and make them all CUPs and that makes sure we're aware of them.
And Joanne, you reminded us again that part of the reason we did this was because we had some, we had a short-term rental that was by right. Did you say that as you introduced this?
No, we did this just because we, as part of our initial issue, issue analysis of the code, is we looked at trends between what our, what we're seeing a lot of CUPs coming in for and whether they were high-impact uses or not. We were seeing, I'd say we probably have had eight maybe in the last year and a half of these type of uses. We have, I think we had two, two months ago. We have one tonight. It, it seemed like a low-impact use that we, you know, have the same conditions every time and going, playing off the way the board directed us with the short-term rentals that, you know, I think the board felt differently if it was in the home than if it was detached. So that was how we went. But if, if it causes concern, this is not something we're not wedded to. We'd be happy to just make, continue these CUPs.
But the, but the short-term rental hosted?
Is a by right, yes.
So you literally could allow the rental, we're, we're currently by right allowing the rental of a room in your house by right, but then you would not allow a parent to move in to your house by right? So that's probably the parallel I was, I was thinking. Doesn't mean you may not, you know?
Yeah, that doesn't make sense. I mean, that's not logical. I mean, I guess it's probably okay with me, you know, not what anybody else feels, but if we're always approving them under the same conditions, then why are they an exception?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, so as I understand this, it's A1 and A2.
And R1.
RR and RP. So it's all of the, all of the lots that are two acres or greater?
Two acres or greater, where the units are attached to each other and all the occupants are related. Is it rented or owned?
Does it matter?
I guess that's the question. So if it doesn't matter and we see these things all the time, we just approve them all the time, the question is, in that very limited instance, are we going to be generally okay? So you're not talking about unrelated people running out? You just, they're all related? It's all attached? Does that help?
No. I mean, it does, except we've got no way to verify it, but we don't verify it now.
Right. If there's an issue, then compliance, then we go the, the way of the complaint, I guess, if there's an issue.
Exactly. Okay.
Can you go back to the slide with the decision points?
So there was just two with that one, the accessory apartment and whether you're okay deleting the forestal district. So those were the only two for that one. So I think, are we ready to move on? Is there any other questions on the ag districts?
May I ask a quick question?
Yeah, I've got some too.
I think it might come up later. Is agriculture the practice? Is that defined?
Yes. Yes, and it's consistent, the state code actually has a definition of agriculture.
State code or county ordinance, but state code defines agriculture?
Yes.
Because I see, we'll probably cover it in a little bit, but agriculture is a permitted use and so I understand.
Yes. And that's a good point to bring up, each one of these uses. We are all going, also verifying that they will have a definition. So all of these new uses that we'll be adding, we'll also be adding definitions for each one of the new uses.
Excellent. That may be just a good point for me to ask a question. We talked about accessibility, that's what I think is a big driver of this. So when you have things like, like it says, this, for the A1, this district is intended to allow minor subdivisions and family divisions. Is your vision, is your vision to, when this is online, to have like a link to, for minor subdivisions? So you can jump hyperlink to the, to the section on minor subdivisions?
The vision is this would be on Muni code. So they do link some of the things. I don't know if it would link to the subdivision ordinance, but say specifically for the development standards, there'll be a hyperlink there when you would just click it and it would link you directly to the, to the use standards.
So we have, do we have a contract with Muni code?
Yes.
Okay.
The subdivision ordinance is a separate document, so I don't, I just don't know how the hyperlinks work. So, but I could verify with?
Well, it's down, it's down the road, but I just, you know, I think one of the things is, I know when I see it, it's like, okay, what does that mean? And if there's a link, that, navigate a lot faster.
Right. Any other questions on the agricultural districts?
Yeah, I, if you don't mind?
Sure.
So can you tell me which of these uses, whether they're permitted or CUP? I'm just looking at A1 now, just for example, that you have added that are new now?
Right. So we go back to the very beginning. So?
Now that was in there?
Yep.
So if you look, this is the first page. So these are the new uses that are added as by right.
Okay. And farm operation is one of the ones I marked, so that has a definition as well?
Yes. It's, it's on the list to do a definition. The definition has not been written yet, but yes, it is on the list. We are keeping lists.
Okay. Greenhouse.
And I could send you this presentation, Ms. Laskolet, so that you don't have to, because each section specifically gives you the new uses for each one.
Okay. I'm questioning the wetland mitigation bank, why are we adding that?
So that's, you know, you see that in ag districts. That's where they are. They're currently already occurring. It's just never been written out as a permitted use. It's sort of been interpreted as an agricultural use. And again, we're trying to take out that interpretation, but there are wetland mitigation banks in the, in the county already.
And they're not CUPs? Okay. Well, probably on some of these, I'd, I'd like to come back and talk to you about some of these that we're adding.
Okay.
Maybe now is not the right time, since we're just kind of seeing this.
Okay. And what we, what we may want to do is, you know, let you digest some of this and then come back next month or two by twos, we can talk to Mr. Podeski about he would like to handle it.
At some point, obviously, these are time-intensive. Two-by-twos is not necessarily the best way to do this.
Yeah.
We may need either a separate work session or something as we go along.
I mean, this is, this is a lot.
It is a lot.
And I thank you for all the work that's been done here. It's pretty amazing.
And it's, it's important. It's, it's probably going to be our code for the next 50 years, so.
Right. Yeah, this probably should be done as a separate workshop, unfortunately.
What do we do for the next comprehensive plan rewrite update? So maybe this, I mean, I'm thinking specifically about the expansion of uses as opposed to just cleaning up compliance with state code, those kind of things.
Yeah.
Expanded rights, is that maybe the comprehensive plan?
That's totally where I'm at, yeah.
The right time? Because that should be not too far off, right?
So the comprehensive plan requires us to look at it every five years. Ours was adopted in 2015, which, when we looked at the entire comprehensive plan, which would, would have put us on a 2020 track. However, we have done two recent updates, the public facility plan in 2018, I believe it was, and then just recently, a few months ago, was the major thoroughfare plan. So technically, the five-year starts from 2018. So it could be 2022. I imagine that would be a policy decision for the board of whether they want to do, you know, in 2020 or 2023.
Probably don't want to wait until 2023 to address this, these issues, but, but it seems like the expansion and the allocation and the graphic displays and all the things we talked about before, probably needs to take place in a more comprehensive look is, for the expansions, not for the cleanup. I mean, I, you know?
So one thing, what we did with, what we considered with the comprehensive plan is we did sort of a targeted comprehensive plan, you know, perhaps this, if I'm hearing you, maybe this is a targeted update to the zoning rewrite. We don't introduce new elements, however, we go in and correct and clean and do the graphics. That would certainly make it much easier and get us closer to hitting things on target. However, I do think, you know, that would, that would be a temporary stopgap. I think there has to be a follow-up where we really do need to add some of these modern uses and modern development practices.
Yeah, no, agreed. You know, I agree. And you mentioned, we've done that with public facilities, MTP. Maybe this, you know, zoning is another targeted look, targeted update for the expansion. But I agree, it needs to be, it needs to be modernized as well and expanded, but just a matter of?
Mr. Peterson, are you talking about doing an expansion within the comp plan or this document? I just wasn't sure.
Well, we're discussing right now this document. And the question would be then, how those expansions feed into the comp plan and how those adjustments to the comp plan would be consistent with what the citizens are desiring in terms of the direction of the county, so that it's all connected and interacting. But I understand this is in the context of just a zoning upright, rewrite or an update. Is that?
And I think the point is, is we're talking about new by right uses. And that, I think we need to have further discussion on that piece of it.
I understand that, yeah.
Some of these uses are already there. Like we have wetland mitigation bank, we already have some in the county. And I discovered it when I heard about the landfill in Cumberland County is using some credits from Goochland. So how do we deal with those today?
Does it mean it has to be by right?
No. So?
And like I said, Mr. Alvarez, that's the interpretation piece that, you know, there's a very general term agriculture and, you know, conservation and open space that are currently permitted uses in the agricultural districts. Staff has taken those and, and because they're, they're not very clear and because there's these gray areas, they've made some interpretations. So one of the goals is whenever we make these interpretations, that this ordinance is clarifying that so that you don't have to figure out the interpretation. I might not be, you know, doing it differently than another staff member. We want there to be, you know, less gray, no interpretations. If there is an interpretation, let's codify it.
Yep.
And I guess what I'm going is that these already exist for the most part. Some are less difficult to consider than others. Community garden doesn't seem like a, like a big deal, but they're already happening, maybe. We know wetland mitigation bank is already out there. Can we just say these are going to become CUP uses? Because none of these are listed as CUP uses today, correct?
Now, these are, I'm not sure, well, like these are best by right uses, we recommend them.
Right. So community garden, is it allowed today?
It's not specifically in there. I believe an interpretation would be made or could be made that that would be considered agriculture.
But it also could be considered a public, place of public assembly?
Exactly.
If then people come to garden at the same time. So would it be, do we have concerns with all of these or with just some of these?
Well, I mean, we don't even have a definition for farm operation, because it's something you're going to write. So I'm not be sure why that's in there or what it even means. I mean, agriculture district is a farm operation, sounds like a no-brainer, right?
And is farm operation new to the code?
Yeah, it's, it's something that we would always have just considered agriculture and we're just trying to provide that extra level of clarification.
Yeah. I mean, my, my sense, I mean, is I don't want to, I don't want to do this in two steps, if we can do it in one. And I hear you, you're just trying to say this is the interpretations. But I do think we, we do need to stop and think about what, because what does farm operation mean? I mean, I don't know that this helps the interpretation problem, right? Because then now you're just going to, you've been, you've been saying this is agriculture. Is it much of a step for you now to have your team go out and say this is a farm operation?
Well, our desire would be to have the definitions very clear, that there's not that questionable or concern.
So we'd be adding definitions to each of these as well. Okay, so maybe, maybe I'm not, maybe I missed the point in front. It does have new uses added by right. What I'm hearing is a lot of these uses are already being permitted when applied for, so they're not net new expansion. It's, they're already kind of there, but they need specificity, definitions, clarity. But it doesn't sound like you'd necessarily reject any of these because they're not specifically permitted. It's just that they might come in under a more loose definition of some other terms or something like, is that fair? All right, so it's maybe not as expansive as I was initially, because it says new uses. I thought these are net new, but really it's just?
These, and these uses were all ones that we had, many of these came up through the Rural Economic Development Committee of, you know, encouraging and adding new uses in agricultural districts so that there's more flexibility and opportunities for people to have their agricultural lands and use it for other things without having to subdivide it. it if they, you know, value add it, being able to do some options. And all of these came up during the REDC committees. Yeah, I think, Mr. Alvarez, I think you and I were on that use committee for that, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just, we're going to be taking away things that you're going to need to come back. We have three other sections you still have to go through here this evening. So if we can hit the high level, identify what needs more time and effort focused on it, we'll bring those back in a separate time for you. This is really to try to get the pulse to make sure we're not going off track. We'll identify additional time to focus on the identified concerns.
Makes sense. Good.
All right, so we're going to now be moving to the yellow tab in the binder, which is the residential districts. So right now, we have nine residential districts in the county. We have the RR and the RP, which are sort of straddled agricultural residential. These are, you know, are two acre and five acre lot subdivisions. The R1, R3, RN and RPUD are more of the typical subdivision type lots that, you know, are, you know, 20,000 square feet or less. And then we have some unique residential districts, which is our residential office, our mobile home parks and our mixed plan unit development. So I'm going to sort of talk about the RR and RP first, and then we'll move into the smaller districts. Again, showing you where these are located. The yellow areas are those, those areas designated for these rural categories. So a lot of the areas you see in the western part of the counties are, are the RR's and the RP's. This is the RP. And then these are more of the RPUDs in around Centerville, Kinlock, you know, Park at Centerville, Saddle Creek. And then you have sort of the lower density R1 type development down along Patterson River Road corridors. Again, same, same changes that we're making to all of them, to the shorten, revise and shorten the statement of intent, tying it to the comprehensive plan, putting those uses in a chart and the bulk regulations in a chart. These are, again, really minor changes, but we want it to be very transparent of all the changes. There was some weird language in there that didn't make sense about lot width and if it's in a lake and a river. Well, if it's a lot, it's, it's not going to be in the Lake River, so we're removing that. There was talk about primary and secondary roads. We've just changed that to roadways because, again, staff and, staff and people can determine what's a primary and what's a secondary road differently. Adding state code uses of the family day home and assisted living, those are required anyway. In all the residential districts, we currently do not allow home occupations in them. Again, that was something in the code. So we are recommending that home occupation be added as a by right use. In all of those, they do have development standards. If you go to the orange category, you'll see development standards. And those are things like they can't have, you know, employees coming other than, you know, people who live in the home or a family member. You know, they can't have clients coming to the home and all. It's a very, you know, small scale. There was also, again, like it talks about, the height can be one story, but it doesn't really give you a, a height, so we changed that to 15 feet. So again, part of the, the, the direction that, that we were on, understanding is that we want it to be adding new uses to the code. So the new by right uses is dwelling manufactured home. That's again, that's always been allowed. It's just never been clarified. And then those two by right, required uses by the state code. Some of the new by right uses with development standards would be the home occupation and accessory apartment attached, which we've already had a conversation about. And then an existing RR use that we would now be moving to permitted by right with development standards that were adopted as part of that ordinance would be the residential chicken keeping. So it would just be putting that information into the, into the use standards. Some of the new use, CUP uses we're adding was accessory apartment detached. That would be a CUP. The RR district already allows a childcare center. And typically, whenever we've seen the childcare center, we've also added adult care center, adult daycare, which is a similar use with similar impacts. Again, so that is the RP. That's the RR district. Also, the open space, there was some unclear language that there, there's some open space requirements, and it said that the staff had administrative authority to modify that. There is always questions on what did that mean? Could the staff reduce that amount? Could they, you know, how, what is that modification mean? We were clarifying it to say that staff could, would not be able to reduce the amount, but they could have some administrative authority on where that open space is located. So again, it's just providing better guidance and more clarity. So that is the RR district. The RP district is very similar to the RR, where it is a two acre lot size with 50% open space. So we added all the same uses that we did in the RR district that I just covered. There were some sections in there about parking trucks or commercial vehicles in the subdivisions. That same standard would be applicable to all residential districts. We would be recommending pulling that out of this, the RP section and putting it in a section where it's applicable to all the residential districts. There's also construction trailers on residential lots are permitted for a period of one year while someone's building a home. Again, we'd be pulling that out and putting that in the development standards of where and when you can do that. And then there was also a section about telephone booths in the utility section, which we deleted since I don't think anybody would be building telephone booths anymore in a residential area. So.
Where Superman's changed.
Yes, exactly. We need telephone booths.
So now we're moving into the R1, R3, RPUD, RN districts. These are the smaller lots, more of the subdivisions. The R1 and R3 can be one acre lots or one and a half acres if you don't have utilities, but they could drop down to 20,000 square feet. I'm going to go through all the sections. We are recommending some changes to lot widths and lot, lot sizes, but there'll be a chart at the end so that you can compare and contrast. So the statement of intent, we're again tying it to the comprehensive plan. The statement of intent is specifically said in the R1 that there would be, could be no home occupations. Again, I think that, again, is sort of the outdated mentality. That was before people were working from home. We do think that that's an appropriate use in our residential characters. The animal, it had the regulations of animals was in the statement of intent. Nobody would think about looking in the statement of intent to determine on what type of animals you can have that. So we, we've pulled that out and there'll be a special, special section in the R1 district about animals. So the new by right uses are those two that are required by the state code. The new by right with development standards would be a home occupation. And then other uses with development standards is chicken keeping. Again, that's the same as the RP district. Accessory apartment, so this is different. So we're dropping down to the smaller lot size. So we are now saying that all accessory apartments, whether it was attached or detached, would require a CUP.
What's the lot size in there?
In the R1. You, it depends if you have utilities or not. If there's no utilities at all, it's an acre and a half. If you have one, either public water or public sewer, but not both, it is one acre. And if it is, if you have public utilities, it's 24,000 square feet, I believe, but we'll verify that when we get to my chart, so.
Thank you, that's good. So chicken keeping, when you get down to small lots, but there's, there's a development standard attached to that?
There are, and that was an ordinance amendment that we did probably about 18 months to two years ago to add it to those districts.
Thank you.
So that was brought in. Matt Ryan citizen request. And then the, there's already a provision that you can have nursery, nursery schools and private kindergartens, but the schools was also a use, so we deleted those and just all schools. So those are the changes to R1. The changes to R3, we did the same changes that were in the R1. This is another decision point that we'll have to make with the board is the R3 district currently allows single family, duplexes and triplexes, all as a by right use. Quadplexes are a, which are the four units, are a CUP use. We have one development, which is across from Creekmore on Patterson Avenue that came in with the triplex development. It's actually sold well. It looks nice. But does the board want to consider, continue to have triplexes as a by right use? Or would they like that to be a only single family and duplexes? And again, there'll be a decision point at the end of the residential section, but that's one thing to be thinking about. Based on the developer roundtable about how there, there needs to be more options for a little higher density development, that's why we are recommending some changes to some of the lot sizes. So we are recommending in the R3 district that the lot size be reduced if they have public water and sewer from 20,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet. So it's basically, the width is what drives the density of the development. So if you have a 75 foot width, you have to have a 276, 267 foot deep lot where it could drop down to 100, 200 feet if you drop down to the 15,000. So it gives a little more flexibility to the development community, makes it more attractive to use some of these districts other than just the RPUD. So the, the RN district is another district, so we're making the same changes in there to the uses that we had in the R1. With this district, we are recommending changing the lot area from 15,000 square feet to 12,000 square feet, changing the lot width from 85 to 75 feet. We did get a lot of feedback from the development community. We often recommend the RN district instead of the RPUD. And our response from them is that they can never make that work because of the lot width. So we are recommending the lot width be reduced. And then we are adding a provision in there that there would be no, no open space requirement for six lots or fewer, which is consistent with all the other residential districts. It was just missed when it was added to that one. So the RPUD district is probably having some of the more significant changes. We have revised the statement of intent. We've reorganized the section. We've deleted submittal requirements that were repetitive. This, we went over the density. We talked about this in two by twos. Current ordinance has a base density of two units per acre, but you're allowed to go up to 2.5 with environmental incentives. Told you many of those were vague and not very enforceable. The development community didn't like the development incentives, so we are recommending that we just delete that and go with the density of 2.5. We, right now, the open space requirements for the RP district is 30%. Typically, what we are getting with that 30% is we are getting the BMPs, the ponds, the unusable land and the buffer, the 35 foot perimeter buffer, and that's what we're getting as open space. Our recommendation with this one would be to reduce the open space requirement to 25%, but not allow them to include that perimeter buffer to meet that requirement. So that way, you're getting usable open space. That's good usable land for amenities within the community. One of the environmental incentives was to require sidewalks. We do believe that that is important in these small lot developments. We typically look through that through proffers. However, we are recommending that we codify that we require sidewalks along one side of the street, except for cul-de-sac roads that are less than 150 in length or serve less than eight lots. So that way, all the main roads in the development would have sidewalks. There was a FAR requirement for residential, which really doesn't make sense. And so we would be removing that. There was a section under the RPUD about townhouses on that you couldn't have, cannot exceed six units per acre, but you could draw that any way you wanted. It's kind of a U-shaped or whatever to make it work, so it really didn't make any sense as long as the overall density is two and a half units per acre. It really didn't matter. So we're recommending that be removed. And then, again, the same use changes as R1 we'd be making to this one. So this is the chart. So this is the existing standards is that third column. The proposed changes is that fourth column. Again, so the R3 and the R1 is where we were recommending some slight reduction in lot size, nothing too significant, but are recommending the lot width in the RN to drop down about 10 feet to make it, give it a little more flexibility and encourage more use of that district. Do you want me to keep going? Because we're at 6 o'clock. Do you want me to try to push through the residential? So the RO district, so that is the end of the really subdivision type development. The next three sections are sort of our, you know, unique, one-off type residential development. We have a residential office development that allows combination of offices and residential uses. Many of those are, we're just recommending some of the changes to the development standards that really make the district very unworkable in terms of building coverage and lot coverage and things like that. It actually has lighting section that's not in compliance with our lighting. It requires, it allows much higher lighting, so we wouldn't want to bring that into compliance. We have a mobile home park. We are really just cleaning up that district, no significant, significant changes to that district, other than we are requiring road requirements to be, go from 18 feet to 20 feet and supporting 75,000 pounds to make it in compliance with the fire standards. At the MPUD district, this change has not been made, but I do need to go back and make this change. We didn't make, anticipate making any changes to this district since it is brand new. We've only adopted it about two and a half years ago. It has not been implemented yet, so we really need to have some implementation to see if it works or not. However, we did have an applicant look to see if they could come in and make some, use a provision in there that you can ask for a CUP for your development standards in there. And they wanted to use that to add, use that provision to apply for it anywhere in the county. That was not the intention of the ordinance, so that would sort of just be closing a loophole. So that is one change that still needs to be made, but that's just come up recently. So the decision points on the residential districts. So as development community indicated, they believe that we should consider reducing the setbacks for RPUD or the RN. They had indicated that we have 75 foot house setbacks. That's not correct. But they did recommend that they think it should be more appropriate to have a 25 foot front, front yard setback. Currently, the RPUD district is a 30 foot and the RN is 40 feet. I'm not recommending any changes to this because we aren't recommending that we go with the projection ordinance. So if we drop it down to 25 feet and then you allow steps to be projected even further in that, you're almost at the road. So my recommendation would be that we not make those changes. The other one is what I had talked to about in the very beginning, the density incentives and then a new district for higher density development or townhouses. I do think that's something that the county looks at, needs to look at, but that's not, this process does not seem to be the right place to look for it. I think we should do that with our comprehensive plan. So I think those are the three decision points for the board for the residential districts. And again, my recommendation would be not, to not do any of those three.
Any of these. Mr. Chairman, I'll go first. You said not do any of these things. Don't tackle number two and number three right now, is the point.
Right, and not.
But I would just ask you, is there, is there a demand for number three? Do you sense a demand?
If we created a townhouse district, we would be the county of townhouses.
Got you, got you. Okay, so question, question on, real quickly, just a couple of questions. And these are just, so I don't lose them and forget to ask later. But on, on the RP, I'm reading, I'm looking at your statement of intent. Agriculture is a permitted use in the preservation area under an approved management plan. I just need some education on that. You asked, you addressed earlier, I mentioned that, you said agriculture is divided in the state code. I've got a couple of questions. What, is, is an approved management plan? What, is an approved management plan, what is that? Is that something we manage? Is that a different agency or what?
The management plan is required. So the RP, when it was designed, is that you can still, you have to have 50% open space. There is an opportunity in that open space that you could have active farming and active horses, equestrian, if they choose to have that. There is a land management plan that has to be included on how they would maintain that and things like that, and that is in the section. I'm trying to find the section for you. If you go to page six, the management plan for the preservation tract.
Behind, behind what?
Yeah, section 144 and 145. That is the, I'm sorry, it's section 144 that describes what that management plan was. Yes. At one time, there was a, a Parks and Rec Authority or Conservation Authority that that management plan went through, but there was an ordinance amendment. We did a year or two that it would be an administrative approval by staff.
Thank you for getting me up to speed on that. So, so just help me understand, why is that statement in, why is that sentence in the statement of intent there versus listed as a use? And related question, is agriculture permitted? Well, I guess, I'm starting to think this, too, and maybe answer myself, but why is that not in RR? Because there won't be a preservation plan in RR?
Yes, so the RR is different. You don't do that. So the RR is five-acre lots. The RP is more of a cluster development. You can have the smaller lots where you can leave, you know, a large acreage to, where you could actually farm. So when the RP was created, it was so that a concept that a farmer could have 200 acres, he could keep 100 for himself, keep farming, and develop those into two-acre lots and still continue to function.
So an approved management plan is nothing that needs to come to this board, right?
It's an administrative approval.
That's just administrative type thing. Okay, so then, one more statement of intent. Oh, one of the things, which, oh, right here, R3, your statement of intent says, "Commercial uses are prohibited." That's in the statement of intent. I didn't see that in other, but no commercial uses are permitted in any of, before we get to RO, in all the residential, I'm asking, no commercial uses are permitted in any of the R zoning areas up till we get RO and later? And I mean, I guess RO is, yeah, RO would be commercial.
So some of the RR and RP does allow some other uses, so you can have, like in the R1, you can have schools, R3.
So that's, that's my question. When, when you get to, because I'm relying, because these charts are great, but I'm relying on those sidebars that you have where you say residential, non-residential. So when I didn't see commercial in the sidebar, then I'm thinking there's no commercial, because I thought, I thought non-residential would be, well, let's look later where I saw schools. They weren't under commercial, were they?
We just, we divided as residential and non-residential. That's a carryover, that's a carryover from the existing ordinance, but I'm fine removing it as, in the, as the statement of intent in the RP.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to tell you my first reaction to, to these bars, I love it, where you can just go down residential, non-residential. And when I didn't, but when you get to the ROs, your bar changes, and I think those are just very helpful, particularly to, I guess, I'm a layperson really when it comes to this. So anyway, just, I think I've said enough on that point, so, thank you. That's all I had. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I just suggest at this point, obviously, it's been a long afternoon. This, as tiring as this is, it was exactly doing what we needed it to do, was to demonstrate to this board how intense of this work product is. We are going to need more time commitment from you, and we can schedule a number of work sessions. I think now you have the opportunity, and we're trying to keep this on a schedule. And so, and we're sensitive to that, but we're also sensitive to making sure you and the constituents understand the magnitude of this. We can schedule follow-up work sessions for you, ask Joanne to share with you the entire presentation now that you know at least the format of this. There's other sections we didn't get to tonight, and that way, when we come into that work session, we may be a little more prepared to revisit these two sections as well as jump into the others. This is part of the overall work product. You heard, this is 35, 40% of the overall work, and so we're going to need to do more of this. So we're sensitive to, obviously, this is budget season. We add a lot of meetings to your calendar already to do this, but we're going to need to look at, when can we fit this and keep to some semblance of a schedule? We may have a very busy spring, early summer as we roll into this work, but as you go through this document, please feel free to continue to share these comments and concerns. We'll work with Joanne, and obviously, there's a heavy load lift from the attorney's office on this product. We'll work together to try to bring back and schedule appropriate work sessions to continue to dive into this work further.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I mean, I guess we could add some time to some of the budget workshops since they're already scheduled, but that may not be easy for everyone.
Joanne, thanks. Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so I think these, and the decision points are very helpful, or the, or the items for discussion for decision are really helpful to me, so thanks for kind of pulling that together, because that teases, that teases out the action items for me.
Right. The other question is, because these books are large, do you want to give them back? We can give you the information, you know, electronically, and as we add new things to it, we can hand it back out to you to look at it. How do you want to handle it? I don't think you want to be carrying your notebook around.
Yeah.
I think you'd be right.
Or, I mean, we could probably just leave them at the podium.
Yeah, and if, if we could get to, to Mr. Menick's point, if we could get the decision points, like maybe a slide for each decision point group.
There's this PowerPoint.
For each section. The PowerPoint would be doing now. We didn't go through it all, did we, today, so?
No, we went through about a third of it.
Right, so, but the PowerPoint would be good, because it helps us go to those points and then start making our questions rather than have to go through the, through the whole book.
Page 103?
103, yeah. I think that's, we're about, about that. And again, as, as, just to let you know, we also want to put this on the web. If you're comfortable, you know, we wanted to run it by you before we put it out for public comment, so, you know, if you're comfortable with us getting this out on the web, because, again, it's a lot of information that the citizens are going to have to take in, the development community. We'd like to start getting that out there so that we don't get all the way to the end and, you know, get pulled back. So it depends if the board feels comfortable that we're in the right direction enough to do that.
I would suggest that you do allow that. Just, the more feedback we can get on this, and obviously, there's, this is all going to be done by public hearing at the end of the day, but the more feedback we can get in the development side of this, so we don't, you know, hit some showstoppers when we're getting to the end, we can work through them, the more information we share.
Yeah, I think it'll help us in some of these decisions, and it's going to take us some time to digest it. It's going to take them time to digest it as well, and they don't have Joanne in front telling them. So, anyway, so, that sounds like a good idea.
Okay. Sorry to overwhelm you with so much information.
No, thank you. Thank you for doing this. It's amazing. Made it a lot clearer. Any, anything else before we break?
No, without, no more things.
Oh, that's right. Appointments. I didn't have any candy today, so I'm, I'm low. So appointments, we do have some appointments.
Take my spot.
Yep, we, we can take my spot unless, unless anybody has an issue with it.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I move, we approve and, and block the nominations for either appointments or reappointments to the respective boards is found in our board packet.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'll, I'd like to thank all the folks who volunteer to these jobs, because they're not always easy.
Any opposed? Is any opposed?
Oh, nobody's opposed.
Except by declaration.
All right. Anybody opposed?
There you go.
Say aye, say nay. No. No abstentions either. All right? So with that, we will break for our dinner break, and we'll return to this room at 7:00 PM for our public hearings. Thank you.
Been dying to see what was in here.
Oh, yeah, I'm glad you came up here. I pulled it out for you earlier.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Goochland Board Supervisors for our 7:00 PM session on February 5th. The first item on the agenda as usual is public comment, citizen comment. Anybody who'd like to speak on any topic that's not on the hearings agenda this evening, please step forward, give us your name and address, and try to limit your comments to about three minutes.
Good evening again, gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Bescuitz, Mr. Podolsky. No more compliments this session, sorry.
Name and address.
Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannakin Road. And I'm going to split this into two parts. The first is just citizen Jonathan Lyle. And I, I feel myself actually lucky that I got to sit through your 3 o'clock session because Ms. Hunter has done just a bucket worth of work. And call me wonky if you want, but I fully appreciate what she has done and is putting in there. And that sort of segues into my thoughts as to what I view, one of the more important things, if not the most important thing, your folks do on the behalf of the citizens, is planning land use and zoning, because that affects just our quality of life, and it's important. And so I hope I've been somewhat consistent, though I'll give myself a pass once in a while, that I really encourage you folks to look and utilize that tool called the comp plan. When you looked at conditional use permits and rezoning within the comp plan that abrogates or deviates from the comp plan, I've had a disquiet about that. And if the past is prologue, we're going to see more and more requests of people coming in saying, "Well, you put a lot of time and effort into the comp plan, but we can make more money if you deviate from that and allow us to do something that's not in compliance with the comp plan." And this is foreshadowed, but you're going to have some public hearings coming up in the next couple of months, I think, that are going to make that very request. So I'm getting my licks in now and saying, "Stick with the comp plan." Just what you looked at, at the 3 o'clock session, Ms. Hunter used phrases like "incompliance with," "works within," "follows the comp plan." It's a pretty powerful document, and I'm not saying that there aren't reasons to deviate from it, but I certainly encourage you to consider them to be few and far between, and really exceptional reasons that you would not want to do that. I think it was, I don't know, Confucius who said something about, "If you plan to fail, you fail to, if you plan to fail, you fail to plan." So, and I don't speak Chinese, so I may have gotten that backwards. But it is the Chinese New Year. It's just, Happy New Year, everybody. Now I'm going to put my Monakin Soil and Water Conservation cap on just for a moment. Mr. Drumright gave you a legislative update. We also track legislation that affects the agricultural community, some of which may also bleed over or coincide with some of the county issues. And I've shared these Senate bill and House bills with Mr. Drumright already, but there is a stormwater local assistance fund that is being looked at for non-MS4 localities, which Goochland qualifies as. It's a matching fund opportunity, but as stormwater management becomes more and more important, as development becomes more and more prevalent, prevalent, you may want to look at that. There's also, proposed legislation hasn't passed, that would give you folks the option of setting a dollar amount increase on land use reassessments. So you could say there would be no more than X-dollar increase in land use taxation, and that would be optional, not a mandate, but with a goal of 85% open space, things that encourage producers to keep land open and in production, that may be something that you might want to be aware of. There also is something, and Mr. Drumright and I have both read the summary, can't figure it out, but it is House Bill 2755 that says conservation easements do not need to comply with the comp plan that are in effect at the time the easement is granted. I don't understand what they're trying to get to there, but anytime I see the words, "don't need to comply with the comp plan," I start to get a little alarm signal there. So Mr. Drumright has this information. It may just be, once again, mischief by the General Assembly, but those things may have impact on what the county is trying to do with some of its longer-range or larger scope goals. Gentlemen, again, I appreciate, and gentlewoman, I appreciate the work that you folks are doing on behalf of the county, you know, from the soil and water conservation arena, anything we can be doing to help you folks preserve the current, what I consider to be good environment that we have out here, living environment as well as agricultural environment, please do not be strangers. I extend again an invitation for you to visit some of our meetings. We have space now, now that you've been gracious enough to provide us or co-op with us with space out at the Cultural Center. I think that I learn a lot when I sit in on your meetings. I would not presume to suggest you would do the same, but try it once, and then you have a reason not to come back if you don't like it, I guess. But thanks again for your time, and I appreciate the work Ms. Hunter's doing. Comp plans are good. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Could I ask you a question? When is the next meeting?
Our next meeting is the 11th.
11th?
And we meet at 9 o'clock. Unfortunately, because, well, not unfortunately, the reality is, we are both Palatine and Goochland. This meeting will be over in Palatine, but in March, we'll be in Goochland.
What day will that be?
You're putting me on the spot. I'm going to say the 19th. It's usually the third Monday of every month.
Third Monday, okay. Now that you guys are close to me, I may be able to.
Well, you know, we're worth the trip.
Yep.
I'll just, that may be, it's, it's in March.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else?
Well, to bail it off, I'm going to mention one more thing.
Your time's up.
The question was asked about nutrient management plans and resource management plans. I think Mr. Lumpkin's asked about those. Those are maybe not the same as what Ms. Hunter is working on, but there are RMP and NMP nutrient management plans that we administer at the Monakin Soil and Water, and those are requirements for some of the cost share programs, and they are very specific as to what you do, cover crops, fertilizer limits, and grazing rotations. So there's, there's a lot that goes into it. They're defined for us, but whether that's the same kind of agricultural plan that is referenced, I don't know, but we'd be happy to share. You could just, as was suggested earlier, cut and paste and use our stuff if you like, but RMPs and NMP nutrient management plans. And I am done.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? I'll close the citizen comment period, and we'll move on to our first public hearing. I believe Mr. Armstrong is here to talk to us about cameras for school buses.
Thank you, Chairman Alvarez, members of the board, and Mr. Podolsky. Thanks for having me on behalf of Dr. Rayland, our school division, and thanks for your partnership, as usual. Tonight, I'd like to just give a brief overview. Tonight, I'd like to just give a brief overview of our support for the proposed ordinance to install stop-arm cameras in our school buses here in Goochlin County Public Schools. As you may have seen in the media, the failure of citizens to abide by the traditional blinking red lights of a school bus's stop-arm can sometimes result in tragedy. And we have worked on several safety upgrades in our division, in our transportation fleet in the past few years, including active GPS, security cameras inside the buses. And this past fall, we surveyed our drivers across all of our routes to determine where our focus would need to be for these stop-arm cameras. And we identified four routes where drivers found a more increased frequency of drivers who did not abide by the extended stop-arm. What we would hope to happen through installation of the system is to, on these four routes, have buses with cameras and activate when the stop-arm extends. And there are two cameras that work simultaneously, one off the dash, one on the side of the bus. Those cameras can capture the license plate of the offending vehicle. And then we would work with our Sheriff's Department to issue a summons. And I believe the proposed ordinance would seek a civil penalty to the tune of about $250. It's not at all a revenue generator for our school division. We hope this to be preventative as much as something that is punitive for those who do violate that law. So again, we are just seeking your support for this ordinance and we thank you for your attention. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Ms. Laskowitz, questions?
Yes, thank you very much. Well, honestly, someone who purposely, willfully passes a stopped school bus, $250 is probably not a big enough fine, in my opinion. And so I totally support the concept of this, but I have some questions on how it's going to be handled.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you don't mind. So you've identified a couple of buses that you, or a couple of routes that you believe are the worst. So that would be your plan to start with them?
Yes, ma'am. There are four routes.
Four routes, okay. Is, we haven't had any serious injuries at this point or anything.
Thankfully, no.
Right. So we're going to try and prevent that, right?
Right, right.
Okay. So it sounds like, once the alleged violation occurs, then the summons is sent to the vehicle owner. Who does that?
We would work with our school resource officer to go through that process. And again, I think we discussed this with the county attorney, but we would let them help us facilitate that process.
Okay. So is the school sending the summons?
The school would send it through the resource officer, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, so I guess the schools then is checking with DMV because you're sending the summons to the owner of the vehicle.
That's correct.
And of course, they have a right to rebut at some later point if that wasn't them driving, or they say there's not. Okay, so the summons is sent to the vehicle driver. We are proposing, let's see if I can get my notes here together. We are proposing that the summons be sent, and I believe there's a 30-day time period. And there's some specific language that has to go on the summons, unless you're aware of that. So, so we send the summons, 30 days goes by, or whatever the appropriate time is, and they don't respond. They quote "fail to appear," don't respond. Is that the point where it goes to the Sheriff's Department?
I believe in my discussions prior, that would be the case. And again, this is a civil issue, but if they fail to then pay that, then it becomes a sheriff's issue. Now, I don't know what their action specifically would be, not working that department, but I believe that's the next step, if they fail to respond to that summons.
Ms. Laskowitz, the state law makes it clear that failure to pay will not be, result in either arrest or a contempt. In other words, you know, usually if you get a summons, you need to come to court or pay it or whatever. But because this is a civil penalty, in the state law, it provides that if you fail to appear or to pay within that timeframe, you will not have contempt or arrest that occurs.
But what does happen?
Well, you know, it doesn't say. My guess, well, I don't want to guess. It's, it's, the sheriff and the courts would, may know the answer to that. I do not. I just want, I just know what the state law says. I didn't talk to the sheriff about how they intended to go forward.
So we don't know how the sheriff would handle it? We haven't talked to him?
No, it's because it's not going to be administered by us at all. It's going to be schools. So they're going to meet with their SROs and they're going to...
And we're happy to discuss how we would handle things at that phase if that were to occur, obviously within the parameters of the state law.
Sasha, I did have conversations with the sheriff as far as their general support and willingness to assist the schools.
Okay.
And there's full support from that. I'm not sure we got down to the mechanics of ability, non-payment and those kinds of things, but I know that they're, expressed full support to the schools for assisting with the enforcement.
And that's good. That makes totally sense. So, so when the summons are, I think the, the code says first-class mail is gets sent. Since this is going to be payable to our treasurer earmarked for the schools, then we send a copy to the treasurer of that letter?
I would anticipate that's how we would do that, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that makes sense. So I guess if the alleged violation occurs, summons is sent, the vehicle owner pays the fine, we're good. Nothing else happens. That's great. And hopefully they've learned from it and won't do it again. But if the alleged violation occurs, summons is sent, and the vehicle owner doesn't respond at all, I guess that's where we're talking about the sheriff getting involved. Is that right? Okay. And then there's, it looks like a provision in the code for the ability to rebut, saying that, you know, yes, it was my, it's my license plate, but it was, you know, my car stolen, or, you know, whatever. I guess then, I guess they go to the clerk of court to rebut, so now we...
Dispute that.
Right.
They file an affidavit, so they don't have to make a personal appearance to rebut.
Okay.
They could do it by affidavit.
Right, but then they have to go to court. Then they have to go to court, okay. Okay, I guess a trial ensues after that. And I guess then, at that point, if we're going to trial, then someone from the schools would be testifying, okay? Okay. And then...
Resource officer, probably.
Yeah, and maybe, since we're involved in the process, I would probably come to the resource officer.
And then what happens if the vehicle owner doesn't respond, doesn't rebut, doesn't do any, absolutely nothing? It's out-of-state vehicle?
Yeah, again, we're...
And like any other parking, we'd probably never find them, or...
Yeah, that's a great question, something I'd definitely probably handle a case-by-case basis with the sheriff. As for those unique situations that occurred.
Right, right. Okay.
And we would do, we would do a pretty large media blitz ahead of this, too. I mean, this wouldn't be a surprise. And even to the extent where, you know, the first time, it's within a certain amount of time since we initiate this ordinance, then it would just be kind of a warning to start. We do want to make sure we educate the public about this. That's the number-one point of this, really, is to make sure there's an awareness.
Well, if you can stop people from doing it, I mean, that would be, that's the bottom line, right? Absolutely. Okay, I just want to be sure that we're clear on the process so that the public understands what's going to, exactly what is going to happen, so.
Understood.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for this, by the way, and I, I hope this accomplishes its intended goal. So there will be video. And have you coordinated with, maybe through the resource officer or directly with the sheriff on retention, how long you're going to retain this? The storage capacity? Are these videos FOIA-able? Can somebody say, I want to know for the last five years, every video you have, has somebody, I mean, could you maybe address some of that?
Sure. We've discussed some of these details and even down to the mechanics of this. There is a hard drive that is actually located on the bus. So if the driver witnesses this take place, then when the driver returns back to the shop, they would call in, number one, you sort of mark the tape at that point. You make note of where it happened, when it happened. Get back to the shop, mechanic can pull that hard drive. And then, once you have that video, and we turn it over to the sheriff, then, I mean, that's, they can keep that for, again, as long as their guidelines would allow. The tape loops, I think it's every 24 weeks. So you have a pretty large storage capacity on the actual hard drives themselves. In terms of FOIA, I mean, I guess this isn't a student record, per se. That's a really interesting question. I think I would consult with some of our folks on that to see how we would process that under FOIA.
Okay, and maybe at some point, can that find its way back to us?
Certainly.
At some point. Because if this is contested down the road and people want to challenge it, they're going to need to discover that, but then also citizens might want to know who's doing it. And I don't know, privacy issues, there's a whole lot of issues here. I just want to make sure we've thought them through from a legal standpoint.
And eventually, I guess, red light cameras have probably sparked some similar conversations and guidelines elsewhere.
And that's why my suggestion to work with the sheriff, because they have body cams and they've been doing this for, I guess, a couple of years now. So there may be lessons learned on all of this, that maybe they can be helpful.
Certainly.
We won't be involved. I mean, if you're asking me to follow up with Andy, I'm happy to.
Well, I'm suggesting he...
I can follow up with you all.
Yeah, I wasn't...
Sorry, no, I was just checking.
You make sure that I'm on board, I'm on solid ground, but I'm just recommending that you coordinate that way. Learn lessons the easy way instead of the hard way kind of thing. Since they've been doing it for a couple of years, it's on their bodies, it's discoverable evidence, and they may have some answers to some of those kind of questions.
And a lot of these questions, again, we would work directly with our SRO on this. You know, we have the bandwidth to do it so much in our school division and, you know, we'll definitely rely on them for a lot of the details in this process.
Okay, good. Well, again, I hope it accomplishes its stated goal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll follow up with you. I think I were even further in the section. I was on the school board when we looked at the ability for a locality to grant the school board the ordinance. But I understand you all are handling this internally, but I think you do want to, before you go down this path too far, make sure you read the last part of this B and you work with the sheriff, because there's a lot of "shall's" there in the language. If the summoned person fails to appear on the date of return set out and the summons mailed pursuant to this section, the summons shall be executed in the manner set out in 19.276.3. And that's, that takes you, that's 19.2 is the title in the Criminal Procedure Code. You jump, you jump over there and it picks up with "shall, shall, shall." So if people don't respond to the 30-day summons, there's some things that the sheriff is supposed to do, is obligated to do under this code section. Now, the thing that, I think, Ms. Laskowitz, nobody, no proceedings for contempt or arrest of any person summoned under this provision, I'm reading in this 19.2 section that was referenced. No proceedings for contempt or arrest of any person summoned under the provisions of this section shall be instituted unless such person has been personally served with the summons and has failed to appear on the return date. So there are some more due process steps. And, and the other thing in this section that you, goes to what Mr. Peterson was asking about, any summons executed for violation of this section, and that's talking about the later summons now, shall provide to the person summoned at least 30 business days from the mailing of the summons. Maybe it's not taught, but to inspect information collected. I think, that's for the first summons. But I would think you want to have this available, you know, you want to keep this available for quite a while to make sure that when, when somebody finally does get, if they're just totally...
Because they could drag one.
Yeah, it could drag out, so, anyway, that's my thoughts. But I certainly support it, but I think you guys maybe should cross some Ts and dot some Is with the sheriff's office.
Absolutely.
And make sure you know how it's going to go.
Yeah, once we have the, again, the, the okay to move forward, we'll, we'll work through that, get that PR campaign and make sure we're, again, meeting all those details.
That's good.
Just one, just quick. I thought I saw that the, Mr. Chair, that the General Assembly proposed some new, there was some new language around stoplight or passing a stopped school bus. I thought I saw something somewhere reflecting that.
This year?
This year. I don't know.
No, they did have all for public safety vehicles, I'm not sure.
It was, I think it was related to a public safety or vehicles stopped on the side of the road, but I...
It was something this year, I just saw it recently. I don't know if that was worth digging into.
My question, I don't know.
If it changes the, if it changes the code.
Well, and it's good looking forward. This would be adopted before that change would actually be implemented. But I'm happy to Google at least and see if there's anything.
I'll do the same.
Following it.
I have a question. Well, Ms. Laskowitz gathers her questions. I have a question related to, it says the payment will be made to the treasurer. And we heard earlier, maybe a letter goes out to the treasurer. But the treasurer may not know the, the steps in between, so do, I'm not sure that that, that it's necessary to have a letter. It seems like it'd be something that would come later from the sheriff to say, okay, there's a payment coming, versus getting a letter when the, when the video is taken.
Right.
Saying, or when the summons is sent originally. Because she might have something that she's expecting to receive and I wouldn't want her to be, or him, wherever the next treasurer is, to be responsible for having to go after delinquent payers.
Yeah, so being just awful about the timing of, you know, when we communicate that to the treasurer.
Yeah, it seems like it's, if I get a speeding ticket, I go to the court and they, I'll pay it there.
Right.
And it goes back to the treasury at some point, but...
Good point.
Mr. Drumright was able to send me a quick link to the General Assembly. There does appear to be a bill that was at least introduced that increases this penalty from 250 to $300. But it, and also, an increased penalty of 600 for any driver who is holding or manually manipulating a handheld personal communications device at the time they pass. Now, that one has passed the Senate, but of course, it's a little early to know exactly what's going to happen. There were a couple of others that were killed. And then it could be that there's another one here for, in the House.
I was looking for, and I don't see it, Mr. Peterson. I thought there was something in one of these codes that said that the person who was served or received the letter had a right to go and view. I thought it was in here, but I just can't put my hands on it.
It's at the last sentence.
It's in the 30, you have 30 days.
It is, okay.
30 business days, which is much more than 30 days.
Correct.
It's the last sentence of the second-to-last paragraph.
Of the code, 46.2844?
Yes, ma'am. Any summons executed violation of this section shall provide to the person summoned...
There it is.
At least 30 business days from mailing to inspect the information on the video. So that's why you have to make sure that you're, you're holding your video at least that long. 30 business days, which, golly, that's probably almost two months.
So I'm assuming that would be held by the schools during that time period?
Yeah, we would keep that.
Okay, and the summons would tell them where they could come get it?
Which we currently do with a lot of our footage, if we ever have an incident of any kind. We, we keep that for an indefinite amount of time.
Okay, and the last question, if you don't mind, the last question that I had is, how much does video equipment cost?
Each bus, I believe, it's about an $800 cost.
How much?
$800.
Okay.
That's off the top of my head. We discussed this back in December and I'm a little fuzzy on some of that, but it's, it's relatively affordable. And that includes insulation, which can be performed by our own mechanics who can take care of that as well.
Right, and that's included in your current budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair, Ms. McGee, maybe, would you know if, if this video type of documentation, if you will, would be covered by the Library of Virginia's document retention program or would this be considered?
I believe it would be. But I, but I haven't checked it for that purpose, but...
But again, I'm just going to encourage the schools, then, it may be covered by the state code, the documentation guidelines, that I believe they adopt the Library of Virginia as their guidance. So you might refer to that, you might refer to videos need to be retained, certain amount of time, what have you, so. And then, and then the FOIA issue, I'm just not sure if these would be Freedom of Information Act, subject to Freedom of Information Act or not, but that's something else to look into.
Right.
Mr. Peterson, on that particular issue, there, the timeframe may not be the typical FOIA timeframe. The body camera timeframe, I think it's like 30 days, because they don't have to keep that amount of data. And so, whatever it is, I'm sure you'll be held accountable for those standards, but it may not be the typical three-year kind of minimum of certain types of data that we have.
Okay, so again, maybe checking with the sheriff, because I'm sure he's already been down that road.
Right.
Any other questions?
Not yet.
Okay.
Again, reporting from the General Assembly, there is yet another bill introduced that's passed at least one house, having to do with DMV releasing the vehicle owner data, you know, from when you get the plate to actually release the data. That's likely to be needed more by set private companies that do this.
Right.
Schools may well be using their SRO to pull the data from the driver's license, from the, you know, the plate.
Yep.
In any event, that also talks about when a conviction for passing the school bus goes to your DMV record and when it does not, and so when also the, the points will be. These are all just out of one bill, but just to respond to what Mr. Minnick had raised about the fact there's been some action in the General Assembly this year, doesn't look like anything that would wildly change what, what this ordinance does, but there has been some, some bills on it still in action. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
So one more question. How did we come up with the $250?
It's in the ordinance.
State law.
State code.
Where?
In the first paragraph of 844, second to last line, civil penalty of $250.
Oh, that, okay, so I was looking down here under us to have the ability to do it, okay, so that's going to apply as well, okay.
So if that does, if the bill that's currently pending does pass, it is possible that we have to change this to 300, because it's not, right now it's not up to, or it literally says that's what it is.
Right.
Our ordinance doesn't have 250 in it, does it? The way I read it, the way I read it, you've written this, just basically adopting whatever's in 844.
So you're right, we wouldn't necessarily need to amend it, it would happen.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing and call you back as we need you.
Great, all right, thank you all very much.
So don't go too, don't go too far.
Don't, will not, thanks.
Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for anyone other than, for anyone who'd like to speak for or against this ordinance change.
Jonathan Law, 1521 Manniken Road. I think it's a, a good idea, I endorse it. I know the GoPro units are out there. I, I'm viewing this as a deterrent, and I'll just drop a dime on myself. My youngest son is pursuing his master's in paleontology, so if anybody knows, anybody who wants an expert on dinosaurs, he grew up with a dinosaur, so he was a natural dinosaur expert. But he, the car is registered in my name, has Virginia plates on it, he's in Johnson City, Tennessee, and he got a red light, I received a red light letter from the Johnson City Police, and of course, I was here in bucolic pastoral Goochland when he was down there in Johnson City, so I was, yes, as who, I'm not, you know, and they had all kinds of gobbledygook in there under their state or their, I'm sorry, their city ordinance, that this was deemed to be reliable process to send somebody a ticket. I had no more intention of paying that ticket, and seriously, I had no idea if his girlfriend was driving the car at the time, if he was driving the car at the time. I immediately thought of something, if there's some person out in Arizona who drives around with a gorilla mask on during the speed violation and the red light violations, and it's like, prove it was me driving it, and, you know, the burden of proof, I think, is on the prosecution, you know, just because it's my car, you got to prove it was me in there. So that all aside, I'd be interested in knowing, what are the four routes? And what if it isn't one of the four routes, and why can't we put them on all the vehicles? I mean, if it's a deterrent, because the letter got my attention, I don't mind saying it's like, and I, my son manned up and he paid the fine, but I wasn't going to pay it, and they could whistle Dixie till the cows come home in Johnson City if they thought I was going to send them, because the car was registered in my name. So that all aside, I like the idea of the cameras going on there, I'd like to see them on all of the buses, and if a more economical GoPro could be put on there that, for attention getting purposes, because when I got the letter, my first impulse was, oh crap, you know, they got me, I mean, because the picture's in there and you saw it, blah, blah, blah. So I'm like, can we do more of it? And then all this stuff, if somebody doesn't pay it, as, as we just shared, it's an attention getting, it got my attention. Had I been driving, I probably would never have gone through that intersection again, but that wasn't me, so, anyway, I like the idea, can we do more of it? And that the details of who sends the letter, and if, if one half of 1% of the people never respond, we still have got 98% of the people. We got their attention and, and they're, you know, paying a fine for something they shouldn't have done. So that's my thoughts on it. Do more of it, and all of the details, you know, again, I, I'm a big picture guy in some ways and detail guy in the others, but I like the idea of doing it, and doing it for all the buses if we could. So, since we are running a surplus based on the earlier three o'clock session, there might be a couple more dollars available for the school district to put the cameras in there, but that's...
You're kind of all excited back there.
Yeah.
Your time is up.
Get the hook.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll close, close the public hearing. Mr. Armstrong, would you come up and, I think I, I kind of know the answer to the four route question, but...
We scheduled insulation on our, you can probably imagine some of our most high traffic.
Don't say what the routes are, because I was...
Yeah, and, and I mean, we're, you know, it's going to be 250, six Cedar Plains, Ashland Road. This is where we have found most of these incidents have taken place.
Any other questions for Mr. Armstrong?
Well, we heard the, the 250, and it may go to three, and if you're texting or playing Space Invaders or Game of Thrones, you're subject to a six. I hadn't heard anything about repeat offenders, second, third, fourth, fifth time, it's just silent at this point?
Business state law authority at this point.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Armstrong? Thank you.
Thank you all.
So what's, what's your prerogative? And I think to answer Mr. Law's question, I think it was, the four idea was just part of the budget, test it out, see, because there's other, as we heard earlier, there's a question about how much data space do we need to keep, and the whole FOIA thing, so I think there's some things to clarify, that I think testing it out on, on some routes is probably the way to go for now. Anyway, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just, just a brief comment, yeah, I think I'm generally supportive of this kind of, of this, of this ordinance, specifically for what it's designed to do, which I think is a deterrent, and also, you know, it's a huge, I think, a huge public safety issue for, for the students on, on bus routes. I, there, I do have a, just a, you know, it's kind of the same feeling you do, that this doesn't feel completely well fleshed out, but I hope Mr. Armstrong will be able to take care of that. I think we do have a few questions that we would like some feedback on at, at some point, and, but, but I do support this, this ordinance, and so I would move that we, that the board adopt this, the proposed ordinance as presented this evening and drafted by the county attorney.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
The only thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, is I really would feel better if we knew how this was going to all work. We just, I just don't think we even know at this point, so that's the only thing that bothers me. We're approving something and we don't even know what the citizens are going to be told at this point, because we haven't fleshed it out. That's the only thing that bothers me about it.
That's a big one.
I think it's big.
Just a little discussion, let's say that we do approve this and it becomes problematic on some dimension, we would have the ability and authority to modify it in the future if it becomes problematic along some dimension. So it's not entirely a one and done, it is a, they're going to spend some funds and it will commit, but if there's a tweak or something that needs to be done down the road, I presume that we would have the authority to...
You do, their, their funds in terms of the video monitoring are expended because they're already on the buses, and so they're not going to go further with funding, is my understanding.
Okay.
You do have the opportunity certainly to repeal it, and should the state law amend in a way that you don't approve of, you may have the opportunity to modify it, or you may have to repeal. In other words, some of how the, this is being done is required by state law, and if, you know, if you don't care for it, you don't have the option of changing your ordinance. And, and we've gone through what's in the state law today about, about that, so I think you're familiar, but in terms of the implementation, there may be things that the school isn't sure about how they're going to do that you can give them direction to, as long as it's not inconsistent with the state law.
So they, state law would govern anyway, and to extend state law changes, at that point, our options would be to repeal and replace, not to modify in violation of state law.
That's correct.
Yeah. Does that make you feel any better or worse?
It makes me feel worse.
Try again.
Yeah, I mean...
Is, is there an approach that you think we could take that...
I mean, what I would like to see is it laid out. How does this work? Who does what? How does it work? You know, the treasurer hasn't weighed in...
Something like the, the procedure, like the, you know, sometimes the, we share with you on our staff what the procedure's going to be to implement an ordinance, and that, that type of thing would have some certainty to it for you.
Well, I'm just wondering what the citizens are going to be told. Specifically, what are they going to be told? And who's going to do what? I don't think we know that quite at this moment. And what's the, what does the treasurer do, what is their role? I don't think they know.
Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Armstrong, I don't know, is there a time sensitivity here where one month over the other is a, is a...
I don't want to speak on behalf of schools, there's not, from your legal authority.
No, sir, we're, we're ready to come out and give you the...
So one, one scenario might be to see how the General Assembly finishes up in a couple of weeks?
In the meantime, I'd like to more detail.
Come up with some procedures, submit them next month, is that...
That's totally good with me, yeah.
Well, it doesn't create any problems for the schools, okay.
Yeah, because I do support it. I mean, I want it to work. I think it's a good idea. I'm just not sure I understand exactly how, how it's going to work.
So I guess at this point...
Mr. Chairman, you have a motion and a second on the table, and then there's been discussions.
So we either need to take a vote on that motion, or can it be withdrawn? If... No?
Um, I'm trying to think through, I, I think it, it potentially could be withdrawn with the agreement of the second.
Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd withdraw my motion.
And as a second, I concur.
Do we have a motion to defer for more clarity?
I, I would move that we defer this until our next board meeting, which would be in March. General Assembly will be over, we've had time to review this a little better, we should be able to act at that point, in my opinion, that's my motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask for a point of clarification? Well, as this comes back, does it have to go back to a public hearing timeframe?
The board is entitled to just defer for a decision or defer again for a public hearing.
Typically, we have always held a second hearing.
Let's do just a public hearing.
Can I, your next meeting, you're going to be here until maybe the next morning? I'm just sensitive to, to the timeframe. So your next two public hearings will go on substantially late, so...
Well, I mean, this should be relatively, we've done a lot of work tonight.
Mr. Podolski, you know the schedule better than I do, is there, is there an evening on a budget day, or are you keeping those clear? I don't remember how that worked out.
Can I just suggest the motion be within the next 90 days and we can pick the right meeting, based on the agenda topics?
I'll, I'll accept it friendly.
I need to check, I think deferrals have to be to a date certain, but let me check the rules on that. I didn't think that we had a tabling sort of motion.
If we, I'm guessing if we defer to a date certain 90 days out, that if we're ready 30 or 60 days out, that we could add it to the agenda, publicly advertise and go, go forward, I would think, huh?
Well, how about if the motion is to table, and then with the agreement, that we will, we will come back with the date? Do that.
I just caution us that this has been going on for a while.
I don't want to go too far.
And we don't, you know, if, if we're going to deter it, we don't want to deter it during the summer period, when schools are out.
I don't want to go too far, right.
Yeah, so...
I know what you're saying, that we do have some heavy meetings coming, this should be fairly short, we've done all the hard work tonight.
Yeah, for us, the hard work is tonight, for our attorney, it might be, might take a little longer, and for the schools.
There isn't anything in your rules that, that requires you to have it to a date certain for the deferral, and this is not a zoning case, so if you wanted to do a motion for a deferral within the next 90 days, it appears to be appropriate.
All right, so I can amend my motion, rather than to the next board meeting in March, that we defer to a board meeting within the next 90 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Then that's it.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second, I don't believe her original motion was second, it's, there's no need for a concurrence, but I would go ahead, but I would go ahead and second the revised motion, I guess it is.
Do we need a roll call for this? Probably not, since it's just a deferral. All in, we have a motion, we have a second, any additional discussion? Okay, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the board, Joanne Hunter, Director of Community Development, I was on the wrong night, that's Thursday night. Public hearing, the next public hearing is for a conditional use permit submitted by Rodal, Rodal and Marta Vincent to construct a second dwelling at 1310 Hockett Road. Property is located in the Centreville eastern portion of the county. As indicated, it's on Hockett Road, the, the property is designated on the comprehensive plan as low-density, single-family residential. There are some medium-density residential designations, and the blue designation on there is the county-owned property on Hockett Road. The property is Zoned A2. The access to the property is to, through the property to the northeast, it comes out onto Hockett Road. You can see there's an existing structure and farm on the existing property. The applicant, the existing structure is about 900 square feet. The applicant is proposing to build a new structure, where you can see the location is about 100 feet to the east of the existing primary residence. This would be what the new structure would look like, this building would be about 3,900 square feet. The applicant would be moving into this structure, and then the smaller existing structure, which is about 900 square feet, would be used for their elderly parents. So this would be a second dwelling unit detached. Community meeting was held back in November, staff and one member attended the meeting, the adjoining neighbor who attended supported the request. These are our standard conditions for detached accessory units. The two units may be on the property subject to these conditions. It's limited, the use is limited to persons related to the residence of the principal dwelling, shall reside in the second dwelling unit. The second dwelling unit shall not be rented separately from the principal dwelling unit. There must be a working smoke detector and carbon monoxide monitor. Emergency access must be provided to both units and their standard transfer of owners Emergency access must be provided to both units, and their standard transfer of ownership. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the center? Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak, or? No? I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone opposed or in support of this application, please step forward. So you know, now I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Vincents' application for a second dwelling at 1310 Hockett Road, as indicated in our packet.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Mr. Bodeski, would you call the roll?
Ms. Ashlet?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Good evening again. The next and final public hearing tonight is a rezoning request filed by Linda Taylor and Hannah Bryant for, to rezone a 14.64 acre property from A2 to rural residential. The property is generally centrally located in the county. The comprehensive plan designates this property and most of the surrounding properties for rural enhancement areas. The property is zoned A2, and the surrounding properties are either vacant or rural residential. You can see this is Turner Road that the property is on, there is an existing farm road that has a driveway entrance to Turner Road. All the byright splits have been taken on this property, they'd like to subdivide it to create two building lots. One would be a five-acre lot, and the other one would be a nine-acre lot, they would share a driveway where the existing driveway is. So as I stated, all the byrights cuts have been taken, so in accordance with the subdivision ordinance, they need to rezone to the RR designation to create an additional lot. Because it's only one lot, it does not invoke the county's development impact policy, and the applicant has proffered that they will not divide the property further. A community meeting was held back in November, two adjoining property owners attended the meeting, and both of those neighbors also supported the request. And they did, as I stated, they did proffer that, that property would not be divided further, which is probably a standard proffer for these types of rezonings. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this one as well.
Questions for Ms. Hunter?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Hunter, there are no improvements, no buildings on this property at this point.
That's correct, it's a vacant property, and they'd be wanting to build two houses, one on each lot.
And those would be single-family dwellings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Ms. Hunter, you said, you said the surrounding properties are either vacant or residential rural.
In character, I mean, rural residential in character, scattered residential.
Gotcha, I was just getting confused about...
Yeah, I like to, like to throw...
Keep me on my toes.
That's my own language, yeah.
So, is this consistent, then, with what they're doing? Is it, obviously, there's vacant lots, but is this, what they're asking, is it consistent with where there are properties nearby? Is this consistent?
So we have always indicated any RR RP zoning categories would be consistent with our rural enhancement areas, so, yes.
And the proffered property will not be divided further, that will obviously run with the land and stay...
That is correct.
And stay there, so, fewer divisions will have to be either...
Another, another rezoning or proffer amendment, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Bob, any questions? Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak? We've worn you out. Any other questions or comments? Since this property is in my district, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the rezoning requested by Linda Taylor and Hannah Bryant, as presented by Ms. Hunter.
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bodeski, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Ms. Ashlet?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
You have your approval. Thank you.
Good luck.
Any other items to come before the board?
That's it. He's getting started.
Nobody wants to add anything? Okay, so at this time, I would like to adjourn our meeting, and to various dates, we have a Tuesday, February 19 budget session, where the county administrator will present his budget, and that meeting's open to the public at 3:00 PM on February 19. On February 26, we have another budget session, and that will include the capital improvement plan, HR and staffing, and public utilities, and again, that meeting's open to the public. And then on Tuesday, March 6, we will get together for a regular meeting at 3:00 PM, for the business meeting, and at 7:00 PM, for public hearings. And those meetings are open to the public, and we just heard that we're going to be, they're going to be really long meetings. So bring your chocolate. Thank you all, have a good evening.